Okay, Mr. President, we're good to go.
Yes, sir, if you don't?
Yes, sir, yes, we're ready.
Madam Clerk, can we call the special meeting to order?
Yes, Mr. President. We're on call from Municipal Council, special meeting July 28, 2020 at 5:00 p.m. Councilman Abdulaziz.
President.
Thank you. Councilman Jafarri?
Present.
Councilwoman Khan?
Here.
Councilman Daffler? Councilman Jackson? Councilman Nims?
Here.
Councilman Perez? Mr. President?
Here.
Turn one to make it.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the statement of compliance?
Yes, Mr. President. Meeting covered by 48-hour notice. Notice of the time, date, location, and agenda of this meeting was transmitted to the North Jersey Herald News, The Record, The Arabic Voice, Italian Voice for State Content Post, Dominican News, The State of International, El Especial, The Patterson Press, The City Post News, Tap into Patterson, in addition to any other publication purely requesting such notices. At or about 11:00 a.m. on July 27, 2020, such notices were posted on the bulletin board in the office of the City Turk at City Hall. I'm not reading public notice. President, the Open Public Meetings Act be advised that the Municipal Council, the City of Patterson, has scheduled a special meeting for Tuesday, July 28, 2020, at 5:00 p.m. to be held via webex or in the council chambers, 155 Market Street in Patterson, New Jersey, for the purpose of discussing the following matter. Public portion. Number to call in for the public portion is 973-321-1579, ID code 7116800071. Now, repeat. ID code 7116800071. Item number one for first reading, no public hearing is required. Item number one, reason, ordinance approving the financial agreement for long-term tax exemption by and between the City of Patterson and Hinchley Master Urban Renewal LP and approving an HMFA tax abatement with, by, and between the City of Patterson and Hinchley Housing Renewal LP. Economic Development formal action will be taken, Mr. President. I'm not hearing you, Mr. President.
Sorry about that. So, Madam Clerk, this is the public portion. The President, at least 10 minutes to call in.
Okay, at least 10 minutes, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so we have, our first item is our public portion. I'll repeat the number, Mr. President, and then I'll give the first speaker. Um, we have no speaker at this point. The number to call is 973-321-1579, ID code 7116800071. The public portion is now open for the special meeting of July 28, 2020, and the first speaker is Miss Sherri Price.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, yes, Madam.
Uh, this is Councilwoman Davila.
Oh, wait, sorry.
Yeah, just wait, I'm here.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, Councilman, um, you're here?
You have the record reflect that I'm being logged in as a Bible or 5:10.
Okay, so you're here, thank you for the...
Thank you.
Let me know, okay, so, the other person, get ready? Price? Okay, shall I get ready sometime? She should have done this before.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Perez.
First of all, welcome back from Dominican Republic.
Thank you, sir.
I hope you was quarantined for 15 days, but that's okay. Uh, my, uh, my question to you and to the public portion comes up. Are you aware that, um, and let me, let me put myself, um... Were you aware in the last meeting that we have in the council, a regular meeting that we tabled is to be discussed in workshop, not in a special meeting?
So, Councilman, are you in the middle of interrogating me? We're in the middle of opening the public portion? Could you leave this discussion from the discussion start on this item? If you don't mind?
Oh, yeah, no problem. I just asked you to speak and I asked, you didn't ask me why I'm going to speak, so I, that's why I put it on the floor.
I thought you was gonna just say something really, but if we're gonna discuss the item or anything pertaining to the item, let's wait for the discussion to take place.
No problem.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Okay, let me just check, Mr. President, to see if Miss Price is on. Is Sherri Price on there yet? Uh, Miss Price, Miss Sherri Price?
No, this is Michael.
Okay, okay, Michael, we go ahead with you and maybe we have a little problem. Okay, Mr. Michael Price, you should, you may go ahead, sir, to the public portion. State your name and address, thank you.
My name's Michael Price. 284 East 28th Street. I don't know if you can hear me or not?
Yeah, I can hear you, I'm clear. Mr. President, can you hear me? Hold on, let me make sure. I, I can hear you, sir, I think it's, it's, uh, the, not in her head that she can hear you as well.
We can hear you, Madam Clerk.
Okay, go ahead, sir, you may speak, thank you.
Okay, so after, after looking at some of the things that have been discussed about this abatement, as a taxpayer, I wanna find out what are the payments gonna be for year number two through year number 34? Because I don't understand how we can approve something like this without knowing exactly what we're gonna be paying. And for me, as taxpayer, I don't wanna pay anything as an abatement, but if I were gonna consider this, I wanna know exactly what I'm paying from year two through year number 34. The same way as I'd advise when I purchase a home and I have a mortgage. I also wanna know how the taxpayer is gonna be positively impacted by this abatement. And that thing I wanna know also is what are the taxes the developer is gonna make in terms of profit over the next 30 or 35 years? I wanna know that. And that thing I would consider also is gonna be what are the estimated taxes on the property that they're gonna be given an abatement for without the abatement? Or if they pay their taxes based on what is estimated, what are the taxes gonna be from this year for the next 35 years of that property? Because I wanna know what they're saving, and I wanna be able to compare what they're saving to what I'm actually spending. Because this is something that, in the City of Patterson, I know we're trying to grow the city, and we wanna bring business to the city, but the taxpayers are tired of never getting a break, and constantly we're giving tax abatements to people for 35 years. Well, half the people on this phone may not even be alive 35 years from now, and it's not fair. We shouldn't have to do this. I would like to ask the people for an abatement for two years. Just give me a break on my taxes for two years. Thank you. Hello?
Okay, Mr. Price, are you finished, sir?
Yes, I, I don't know if they, yeah, I don't know if they heard you enough.
Yes, your questions will be addressed later on. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please?
Yes, sir, next speaker is Miss Sherri Price, I think, Miss Price, Miss Price, are you there? Yes.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, you may go ahead, give your name and your address for the record, Miss Price, and thank you.
My name is Sherri Price. And you need my address, is that?
Sure, yes, thank you.
283 Alperon Ave, Patterson, New Jersey. Um, my question is, I need somebody to explain the pilot program, and also, did we learn from this abatement before? Where we gave the people on the hill a break? For grades in the basement for 20, 30 years? And lip fees and all of that? Why are we giving abatements to anybody coming to the City of Patterson? And I don't get a, I don't get a break on my taxes when it's... So, I don't understand why another investment we could get. So, we need to start looking at these things, and like the other caller said, how are just, they're making on us compared to, why are we making anything? We need answers to these questions, and when would we get answers? When would we be getting the answer? Hello? I've done my questions, but I wanna answer, because I want Tyler Hadron to answer.
You'll, you'll get an answer after the whole speaker finish? Uh, the administration's taking notes and they'll, they'll answer your questions, then? Okay?
Okay, when would I get an answer for it? Like, after the meeting is, or?
No, no, no.
Don't you call me.
Right, right after, right after the voting, uh, finished speaking, I have the administration address all those questions, and then we'll go and discuss the item, due to us.
Okay, and I'm also asking the City Council, so please, stop putting your own personal feelings into this of how you feel about certain people and vote according to what is best for the City of Patterson. Not what's best for you or your friends or anything else, won't you want to get what? It's what's best for the city as a whole. That's how we need to start voting in the City of Patterson, okay?
Thank you.
So, I'm just asking you to keep that in mind when you're voting, okay?
I think so.
Thank you.
Speaker, Madam Clerk?
Yes, why don't I check up, Mr. President, to have one speaker?
Mr. Powell and, um, Madam Ebe, please say no of all the questions that I'm gonna ask. We're gonna answer them as soon as we finish the public portion. Thank you, Mike.
Mr. President, um, Ryan's asking us to wait one second. He has someone, I guess he has to get the name.
Do you know how many speakers we have so far, Madam Clerk?
So far, I, I have only the two that speak, but he said there's one more until 5:27, when we shut down that, oh, portion. So, he has one more, I'm just waiting on him. The next speaker is, um, Valerie Freeman? Valerie Freeman, Miss Freeman, are you there? Okay. Valerie? Ms. Freeman? Sir, dear. Number 37. Here I am. At the end. Good job. Miss Freeman, good evening, you may go ahead, with your name and address for the record, and you may... Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, your name and your address for the record, thank you.
Okay, no problem. Valerie Freeman, 108 Dorf 9th Street, Patterson. I'm calling in, even though I believe it's not gonna make a difference on what I say and what I feel about this whole decision deal, I just want the council people to know, those of you who vote yes, I believe that you truly do not care for this city. If you have read the same deal that I read, then there should be no way in the heck that you guys should be voting yes on something like this. The developers walk away top three, the developers win, the people of Patterson lose, and I know the rhetoric is gonna be it's for the kids, it's for the seniors, it's for this, it's for that. The citizens of Patterson will lose with the deal of this nature. Now, I, I look at some of you as being very intelligent and smart. I read, I read the whole deal. And either you guys have another set of numbers that's not in this deal, but it's absolutely no good for Patterson. My prayer is that, even though I know the five that I mentioned earlier is gonna vote yes, just know that with a yes vote, come peace. I don't want anybody to say people are being disrespectful, people saying this. This is going to affect the city. Whatever you guys are going to get out of it, shame on you, because you're not making the move for the people. Another thing that I would like to say is, I don't know what you're getting out of it, but we've elected you to make conscious and efficient decisions. And this decision here is not a conscious and effective decision. It's actually a dumb decision. It's actually a dumb to vote yes, but needless to say, I know who's going to vote yes, and I know who's gonna vote no. And to those that are voting yes, I'm looking at you differently, because in my heart of hearts, I just really don't feel that you have the best interest of the city, and I have zero confidence in you. But I want you to say that, and I want that on record, that I'm saying, I have zero confidence in you. Um, when you're ready to sit down and talk real talk with real people, we're not gonna make it all sweet and shiny for you and give you the raw that you need to let you know that you're really not doing anything, when you're ready for that, talk with a few people in this community, then reach out. I'm saying it, and I want it on record, that's what y'all always say, that I'm asking for a meeting of such. If the council president can set it up, because this right here with his Zoom, whatever this is, talking video, no, I need to be face to face, so you can see the passion that's in my face and what I, and what I believe. Now, when you're ready to engage the community, for real, for real, reach out! But it's, it's, I'm leaving it in your hands, because I'm not gonna reach out again. But this deal is no good, it's, it's an epic fail. If you've read everything, unless you guys, like I said, have another set of numbers that are different than what I read, then you have to, you can't possibly think this is a good deal. Can't possibly think this is a good deal. And I feel bad for the city, because right now, y'all all over the place, and you really look like you don't know what you're doing. So, with that said, I'm not gonna stop questioning you, I'm not gonna stop challenging you, I'm going to continue to do what I do, and if you guys don't like it, then it's your, it's your obligation to block me or don't listen to me. But just know that I have zero confidence in any one of you who vote yes on this project. Gilness, welcome to the club, don't be a part of the club, speak your mind, be yourself, and make decisions on your own. Don't let nobody tell you what to do, but they've already said that, because they called and text you. So, you ladies have a, ladies and gentlemen, have a great evening.
Thank you, Miss Freeman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, there's no one else on the public portion, may have a motion to close the public portion.
Move to close, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I have, Councilman Nims closed, and the second...
Second.
And Councilman Carr. Mr. President, I have Councilman Nims with motion inspected by Councilman Abdulaziz and Councilwoman Khan, is correct?
Wrong, wrong, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. We're on call to close the public portion of the special meeting of July 28, 2020. Councilman Abdulaziz?
Yes.
Councilman Jafarri?
Yes.
Councilwoman Khan?
Yes.
Avila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Nims?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilman Perez?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
The vote is seven in favor?
Madam Clerk?
Oh, Mr. President, Councilman Jackson?
Yes, I apologize, Madam Clerk, for my technical issues.
That's okay, Mr. President.
As you can see, I have two, two lines on, but...
Okay, but closing the portion.
I understand. So, relative, um, what's a little bit disappointing to me at this moment is that there's members of the public that brought forward questions, and, uh, Council President deferred those questions and said they were answered.
Answer, Madam, there will be answers.
I'm, I'm, I'm in the hall, Council President, we're in the hall, please. So, the members of the public deserve to be answered, and they need to hear answers from people who are not to be held accountable. This council is voting this evening, they, they shouldn't have to be, um, sold the bag of goods from the administration. They should hear from members of the council relative to what their concerns are. And, you know, when we went to, to Miss, Miss Price's question with regard to what's being returned or what's being paid, um, the fact of the matter is, this, this, this tax abatement is definitely gonna have a direct impact on the community and none on the developer. The purpose, and Miss, Miss Price, you asked the question of what is a pilot? A pilot is payment in lieu of taxes. It is supposed to be a tool that the city uses to help generate revenue. And as you can see from this project, there's zero revenue being generated, especially from what we're being asked to put out. So, it's a very, um, lopsided project, it's a disappointment that we're even here, and I'm more disappointed that none of the council members are willing to answer these questions of the public raises. With that being said, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I have my popcorn ready for this, but my vote is yes to close the public portion.
Thank you, um, Councilman Jackson. The vote is eight in favor, the director's in favor, but the third vote is vacant, before the public portion is now closed.
Madam Clerk, at this time, I wanna have the administration start asking some of the questions from the public, and any council members, also, you can, you two minutes.
Council President?
Councilwoman Perez?
Um, I, without disrespecting, uh, your leadership in this council, uh, would you like to address first my question that you say you're gonna do after the public portion?
Madam Clerk, we have the whole meeting to do that. Let's, uh, I just asked Madam Clerk to proceed a certain way. Uh, let's just continue that way. I believe the residents need an answer first, then we'll get to speak later, how about that? Madam Clerk, will you proceed?
That would be good.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, so, Mr. Powell, you wanna start asking some of the questions for the public?
Yeah, sure, Councilman, and thank you, Council in general, for all of your hard work and for helping us to put together a meeting, Council President, and people, thank you for helping us to get there. Uh, the Hinchley train is completely to move forward, we're very excited about it. I wanna thank the Council again for all the hard work getting us to this point. Um, it is an important partnership project that includes the school district, the city, uh, our development team, as well as the state of New Jersey, our legislative delegation helping create these credits, as well as the governor who helped us to preserve them. Um, there's several different budgets that we're still continuing to pursue, um, but I also wanna thank our federal government, which, um, is also a part of the partnership, particularly the...
Director, Director, if you don't mind my interruption, uh, you're gonna get a chance to present the project, right now, can we just answer the questions? So, please, start with the question and then the answer, if you don't mind. You're gonna get an opportunity to present the project, I mean, the pilot, uh, after you address all those questions. So, it's the question that was asked, and then the answer.
Okay, so the first question was about the payment by year, right? And so, um, the way that that works, and Councilman Jackson's exactly what that's in, in the assets. And, um, there are several different funding sources that require a particular pilot payment because of the way in which we structured the project. So, for example, because we're protecting seniors from doing senior housing, as well as the senior center and public parking and a stadium, there are several different uses that are tied into this. And so, just speaking, the way this is working is that, um, the payments, you can begin around 93,000 and the long sum, so it becomes about 3.8 million, as currently, um, put forth. And again, the reason that that's being put forth is because the pilot is a little over 35 years, but rather than 30. Um, and we've also changed the, um, the percent from 3% to 6.28% with regards to the housing component. The elements would be 10% both in terms of the preschool and 10% in terms of the parking, as a way to ensure that, um, the project is successful in the future. We will talk about when we make a presentation. Um, and then in terms of what are we saving? Well, I mean, currently, the property is paying zero in assets, right? So, this is going for us to bring about a catalytic project that has several different benefits to the community, at the least of which is, I think, important around cultural heritage and realities of Patterson's unique legacy. Um, the next question that was posed was about explaining the pilot program and what ultimately it is, and why do we give abatements? And so, I think this is a fundamental argument, that's a public policy argument, that cuts across a variety of different, um, realities. So, for example, um, each municipal housing mortgage finance agency requires a pilot as a way to help support affordable and support housing. Arguments being made, and I can also chime in with our development colleagues that are on the line. I know Joe Horst and Seer, as well as Baye and Wilson, um, to kind of understand how the development process happens when you're building something that isn't market grade, right? So, if you're building senior housing, you're trying to keep, um, pricing low so that folks with low income can maintain it over time, um, that's how you can do certain types of abatements. Ultimately, the funding source requires it as tied to, uh, making sure that it happens. And it's also tied to the structure of the time period, the time period, which before was 35 as a way to also reduce, uh, what the residents need. But with 3, it is, it's now the current structure. And so, that's why we support this through public policy, and this is why the state has a program that's designed to do that. Um, Joe, Baye, do you wanna add anything else that I missed? Or do you have any other types of comments that you'd like to add, feel free to join in? Um, Joe's with Harvard and Felvin Corporation, they've done a lot of the before work throughout the state.
Council President?
Director, could we, do you go question by question and give an answer?
Yeah, I'm doing that now.
Call out the question that was asked by the resident, and then I'll answer it.
Hey, Council President?
Hold on, I'll be careful. Do you have those questions, and then, um, Director?
I just, yeah, I just, I just did that. Um, the first one was from Michael Price, and it was on payment per year. So, I think that it's an escalation payment that starts at, um, the first year, and again, it's a 30-year abatement, so it starts at, um, 90, it's 93,620, and it asks 3% over the course of the 30 years.
Council President?
Council President?
129153, uh, for a total of 3.874599.
Add it. Uh, now, Councilwoman Davila, Councilwoman Perez?
Director, can you please, you keep running by the numbers really fast? So, 93,000, right? How many years will they be paying 93,000? Put it on the record.
Okay, so, yeah... Okay, so, yeah.
The community doesn't have that watching, they don't have the paperwork we have, right? So put it on the record. Because you're saying you're making it seem like this is like the best thing since sliced bread. We had a conversation this afternoon. I requested some information that I wanted you to put in writing in terms of you saying that it's a required, it's required by HMFA. But you didn't send it to me. I want you to put it in writing. So, Council President, give me a second. All I want is for him, the director, to put in writing, if you're saying, so for the first, how many years will they be paying ninety-three thousand?
So, hold on a minute, Director. Could you please answer the question for the public like I asked you at the beginning? Once you finish, we're going to go ahead and Madam Clerk is going to read the item. And then we're going to enter into a discussion regarding the item. Could you answer the question for the public and then I'm going to ask Madam Clerk?
For Council President, Council President, if this is in regards to the first question. So as a councilwoman, I'm asking for him to be clear.
Councilwoman. Who called him? He doesn't answer the question in the manner that you feel that he should have answered to the public.
In the way it should be.
Okay, nobody's saying you're wrong, Councilwoman.
Council President?
Chance to ask the question again if he doesn't address it now. Councilwoman Velez?
Yeah, Council President, I think my colleagues are going to notice, also the viewers are noticing that when you ask our director, Powell, to answer the questions, he's trying to speed it up and dump it to the developer and dump it to other people in the, whoever is here. And we want to have the conversation first with the director and answer the question respectfully with the concern of the resident. And also, he mentioned ninety-nine dollars, ninety-nine thousand dollars. I want to know what percent that starts, if it's a two, three, four, ten, one.
Councilman, you have some valid questions. Director, like I stated previously, answer the questions briefly from the residents. We're going to ask Madam Clerk to read the item to the record and then we can entertain a discussion. So proceed, Director.
Okay, so the first question was, the caller was asking about the payment by year. And Councilwoman, I believe that's a good point. I will talk slower and I'll make sure that the public is fully aware of everything I say because I want to make sure that it's consistent for the record. And I will do that. So again, the pilot cuts across several different elements. And there are different percentage rates based on the different funding sources at which this is relied upon. And so with regards to the housing component, that percentage rate of total revenue becomes six point two eight percent of the total revenue. And that is fifty-six thousand, two thirty-six in the first year. And then for the other component, which includes the commercial element, which is what is designed to be kind of like a, what do you call it, a childcare center of sorts, and that's at the ten percent. That's seven thousand, five hundred and twelve. And then the other master element that's tied with the Hinchcliffe Stadium itself is twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and two. So the first payment that the city of Patterson gets is ninety-three thousand, six twenty. And then from that period on, it continues to escalate by three percent over the course of the thirty years, which is the term of pilot. So that equalizes out in two forms. So if you average it out over time, in other words, it goes from ninety-three thousand, six twenty the first year to ninety-five thousand, three forty-two the next year, ninety-nine thousand the next year. So it keeps going up, right? That's the idea because it allows us the flexibility to get the project sustainable. So the total net, and if you average it out over the thirty years, you're looking at about one twenty-nine, one fifty-three. So if you think about it, the city's pulling in one twenty-nine, one fifty-three per year for a total of three million, eight hundred and seventy-four, five nine nine are the current calculations that we have. I can say it again, if it's helpful, but that's basically how it works across this overall project, which includes nearby senior housing, ground for preschool and/or kind of daycare, as well as an adjacent parking garage to help drive revitalization, not only for Hinchcliffe Stadium itself, but also across helping to open up the rest of the neighborhood, which includes the vistas and some of the other adjacent property that I believe will help begin revitalizing. So that's how, and that's what the payment is ultimately by year. Happy to share that because that was the first question, Council President.
He forgot the percent of the Hinchcliffe Stadium.
Ten percent. And by the way, right now, it's zero, right? Because it's derelict land, right? So the point remains is that when it comes to, from a revenue perspective, none of this is contributing to the process.
All right, so we don't have to go back and forth with the director at this time. Any questions, Director? Councilman, hold on a minute.
Just to the.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
First item into the record?
Yes, sir. So the next item is item number one, for sure, freely, no public carry is required. And order is approving the financial agreement for long-term tax exemption by and between the city of Patterson and Hinchcliffe Master Urban Renewal LP and approving an HMFA tax abatement with by and between the city of Patterson, Hinchcliffe Housing Renewal LP, economic development. They have a motion?
Tom, Paul?
I close the name, the second?
Do you have a second? Second?
Is there a second by Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Okay, they have a motion and a second on this one. Mr. President, give me a.
Council President, Council President?
Roll call, Madam Clerk?
For what?
You want discussion?
We have to have a discussion.
Of course, Council President?
Discussion, discussion.
Council President, I want to respectfully request to this council, to you, Council President, one more time. Respect of the requests that I made in the last meeting, that this item should be taken to workshop for further discussion without taking an action today because there's a lot of papers and there is a lot of numbers that we have to go over and we need to analyze before making that decision. It's prudent that if the taxpayer of the city of Patterson has concern, we as legislator of this city have more concern, especially when I heard the director of the community of development saying that they will start at a six percent. And normally, in the history of Patterson and tax-abeying a pilot, we always start at ten percent at every pilot that have been in front of us. And the last time that we approved one was, I believe, a couple of months ago for a running senior building that we still have to see if they have approved that property. I respectfully to this council, I would like to honor once again that this matter is going, sent back to workshop, have a healthy discussion, okay? And have a fact to analyze, not only what is presented with this document, also to analyze the agreement of Hinchcliffe Stadium that I still have in my hands. And I'm being going page by page to compare apple with apples or potato with whatever you want to compare it because there's some language that was not explained. At the Hinchcliffe State Master Urban Renewal Plan, it was not explained with all the capacity on June two thousand and nineteen that speak about the responsibility of the board education and the city of Patterson. Once again, once again, I would like to see if this could be tabled for a workshop that we all could sit down and have a full council council in on board and move forward. If that is not honored, I would like to also, second request, if that's not honored, then we consider this meeting as a workshop without taking no action at all.
Councilman, all right. Nobody noted, we had this meeting to discuss this. Any other council members?
I second that motion.
He didn't make a motion, he made a recommendation.
I did, I did a motion, sir.
Okay, Madam Clerk, a motion on the floor to table, Madam Clerk?
A motion by Councilman Velez?
Table for workshop.
You have a motion by Councilman Velez and a second by Councilman Jackson?
Or, or Council President, if no, if no motion.
Madam Clerk? Councilman Velez and Councilman Jackson, you know, they moved this recommendation to table. Is it local?
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call to table, Mr. President, is the workshop of August fourth, is that okay, everyone?
That's good.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Roll call to table item number one until the, until next workshop in August fourth, twenty twenty. Councilman Abdelaziz for tabling?
No.
Item?
No.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson? Councilman Jackson?
Madam Clerk?
I can hear you.
Can you call back the vote count thus far, please?
Can you repeat that, Councilman?
Can you call out the vote count thus far, please?
Three noes and one yes.
Wow, okay. So before I vote, you know, I'd like to once again, just place on record my level of disappointment. And also, a moment to congratulate the administration. I mean, you got to give credit where credit is due. You know, how are you? You have to give credit where credit is due. And the ability to have taken control of the legislative body is an absolute remarkable thing. You know, even at best, my first month as a councilperson, unless it's something that I'm completely certain on, you have such a torn understanding from the public and everyone else. You have newly sworn in councilpeople voting on measures that you're keeping yourself from. But would not the administration's ability at the moment to take this council hostage would not accuse me from remaining responsible. This is an absolute travesty to the community. And the fact that we're not even willing to have a more double abate and make sure that everyone is sound and clear about it is disappointing. And lastly, before I vote, Director, the resident texted me, said he did not answer his question. He said he wanted to know the exact amount from year two to year twenty-nine. And he failed to answer his question. So would that be accepted, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes to table?
He means? He said no?
No.
Thank you. Councilman Velez?
Madam Clerk and Council President, you know, are you going to vote now for this one? But I just want to remind you, I have another motion. When we finish with this, I will please entertain that motion after I did this vote. My vote is yes to table.
Mr. President?
My vote is no, Madam Clerk.
The vote is five in favor. I'm sorry, five against, five against. And three in favor. The director of the state board is vacant, therefore the tabling of item number one failed.
Council President, I have a motion. I have a motion to continue this meeting as a workshop and no action taken.
Madam Clerk, there's no other discussion. We continue the discussion on this item for a vote? Continue the discussion?
There's a motion at the table to continue this meeting as a workshop, but not taking no action on this meeting today.
Councilman, this was advertised as a special meeting and as a workshop. Council President, we will be taking action on this item today.
Yeah, I just want to clarify to the councilman from the fifth floor, change the meeting as no, no direct impact, so the motion is second, that's currently on the floor, which is the item. It's even about the meeting, which is not about the item. Therefore, as you say, should not be, okay, thank you.
Hey, Council President?
Any council members that want to continue with the discussion, please ask for the floor to be.
Council President?
Two minutes.
Council President? With all respect, I'm going to address the Councilman Abdelaziz. Yes, Councilman Abdelaziz, I agree impartially with you. What I do agree is that in the beginning of all this situation regarding this meeting that was called special meeting by Councilwoman Melissa Minz and then supported by the president, is that we requested in a regular, in a regular meeting to go to a workshop. Still, the president and whoever decide to send in a special meeting when we have other things to take care of before making a smart decision. Even if it's the first meeting, I understand that. But there's a lot of paper here that had to be assimilated and explained and we don't have that time probably now.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman, Councilwoman Minz?
I'll dig rights from the wire. I have to defend the line, thank you, Council President.
Any other discussions pertaining this item?
Council President?
Councilwoman Davila and Councilman Velez?
Okay, so, so I really dislike the back and forth. You know, we need to discuss city business, but we also have to tackle with the lies as well, okay? I received an email, okay, with the request that you, Council President, corrected the clerk in saying that the vice president did not have the authority to call a special meeting and he did not have the authority to set the agenda because that is your purview as a council president. And so when I hear people saying, no, I didn't do, didn't do, it's wrong for us to lie to the community. Now, with that said, I don't want to discuss that anymore. I do want to discuss this. I want this to be tabled, yes. Because Council President, you were away and you handed the meeting over to the vice president, okay? And there was a request for it to go to workshop. Can I just ask why you discussed it, that you should vote for a first meeting? Without having it properly vetted? There's a lot of information here that the community should be critical to. Nobody's saying we don't want to see this development. But the administration, the mayor, has had a hundred and thirty million dollar tax credits given to all these projects that he can't get himself. And there is yet not one shovel, not one underground. So all this, we get elected not by the law, we get elected by the community, Council President. Why did we not discuss this in a workshop? Council President?
You're done?
Yes, I am.
So this item, I spoke to the administration, this item actually, you're supposed to submit an application to the agency, what's the name of the agency again? The HMFA?
HMFA.
HMFA. They have a meeting set up for them and they need this approved at the time. Now, council members, last time I voted no on tabling it because I wanted to entertain a discussion. After the discussion, if things were not clear, then any considerable council member here will vote in favor of tabling it. But we have not heard, we already had a previous meeting where we could have had a discussion and then the item, the tabling it, could have come after the discussion, right? At least we would have the benefit of a discussion. We're doing the same thing tonight. We have a lengthy agenda, we already scheduled this meeting for today. We have a lengthy agenda for the fourth, the workshop. We're here right now. We have a discussion of the item. Let's not do what we did last meeting. Let's have a discussion of the item. Let's get at least a start for any questions that we might have. And if we don't have all the answers that we want today, then we couldn't entertain whatever you want. But I think it's fair that last meeting, we put on the agenda, at least we could entertain whatever you want. put on the agenda, at least we could entertain a, a small discussion on it. If it wasn't heading in the right direction, we're gonna table it. We could do the same today. We're, it's the time to set up this meeting. There's members of the public watching. At least let's give them, give them the benefit of the question. And then we move from there. Please.
Council President?
Okay.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, you know, I probably be, I, I'm probably, I'm short of words, but not short of memories. Um, you know, I sit in the committee of community development, county development. And, um, the call, the meeting was called at twelve noon, okay? I log in at twelve forty-five on the meeting. Every, everything was discussed with the developers. When I asked my questions, and that, that, those questions was never answered, I say, okay, we're gonna prove it to send it to workshop. And that was the intention of all this from the beginning. Somehow, we just leaked in the agenda in the regular meeting. Still, we sent it to workshop. Now we're in the position that, again, they put in a special meeting, okay? And still we request respectfully to clarify a lot of issues here to send it back to workshop. That is not gonna happen, and I understand it. But right now, there's a lot of, uh, uh, I know it's the first meeting. There's a lot of things here that's put in the table, especially with that six percent. Right now, we don't have the, uh, the ability to even read, okay? And, and present all this paper that I, I had, I need a loop to read, a loop to read, because it's only numbers. It's only numbers and percentages, I don't see them. And not only that, you're talking about, uh, uh, Council President, allow me, please, I, I, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna present you that there's a bunch of civics, there's a bunch of pages, look how big it is. This is presented to us. And not only that, we have a memorandum of, uh, a development agreement that still, I'm trying to look in their language, where it says that we have to honor a pilot. So, and, 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 uh, at least, at least, at least, uh, uh, last but not least, you know?
Your rep, please.
Yes, last but not least, you know, I, I'm not here to discuss, uh, the evidence, uh, of, of the last meeting is out there. People saw the meeting, and, uh, we are here, ready to move forward, but give it a balance. We wanna balance.
Now,
Thank you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask any councilmembers. I already understand your displeasure of having a special meeting today. Could we please discuss the matter at hand? Any questions that you have pertaining this item, that's what this meeting is for. It's not to voice our opinion to the public about this pleasure for this meeting. Could we add, could we discuss this item, please? Okay. Somebody make it tonight?
So, Council?
Two minutes, please.
Council President?
Councilwoman Davila.
Okay, so, so the director is on, right? I wanna ask Director Powell for taking to the item. We had a conversation, and I asked you to send me in writing, okay, because you said that this was a document by HMFA, that we had to do this, if not, um, this, uh, they don't have this, uh, pilot, they're not gonna be able to do private. So I'm gonna ask you, how much is the developer, how much are they saving in taxes?
Um, how much are they saving in taxes? Currently, there's no taxes happening on site, right? And so the point of view?
I, I understand. We already know that, there's nothing there now, so we're getting nothing. I get that. Okay, I, I, I'm just, you know, when I look at the numbers and, and, and you're talking about this, you had a nice conversation with me, and you said, I'll put it in writing for you. I said, keep it simple.
Councilwoman?
Yes, right? Let's keep this simple in terms, one, one second, Councilman, please, uh, Council President. Um, I told you, it would be so much easier if you just put the points of where the benefits are for the city of Patterson, for our Pattersons, for our taxpayers. And you said you were gonna do it. I even emailed you. Why didn't you send me that cremation?
Okay, Councilwoman, I didn't mean to interrupt you. But I, I'm, I'm also, Mr. Powell, I wanna hear the first question she had, and then you could address the second one. The document from, from, from the, the MA, uh, I'm all.
HMFA, HMFA.
HMFA, yeah, that one. Uh, could you please, could you please state where that document is? Where it says it's a requirement for them to get the funding?
So, so, yeah, I mean, I can talk about that. I mean, there is, it's called the, um, Qualified Allocation Plan, which is the QAP, which is tied to the Housing Mortgage Finance Agency. It submits this, I believe, every year to the federal government in order to get an allocation of the low income, of low income housing tax credit, um, program, which is tied to the federal government. So in those rules, if you will, they spell out the requirements to match, should you get money from that agency to, um, subsidize it so that this, the local municipality that's supporting affordable housing can get something for doing positive public policy, which is supporting, again, affordable, supportive, and or kind of senior housing, which is what we put for. And so.
Do you have access to the document right now? Director?
Uh-huh.
You have access to the document? That states that a pilot is needed on your?
He does as well.
Council President? That's what I asked for in our meeting. I, I requ, I told him to send me that in email, in, in an email. So just right now.
If he has it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at it right now, and our development team is also on the line, and we can also answer across, uh, any question you have.
We don't, we don't wanna answer, we may not answer to the question, uh, Director. In the interest of moving this, this item forward, we're looking for a document from, from this organization that states that in order for them to proceed, a pilot needs to be in place. This is what she's asking.
Yeah, and I, I can provide that.
Okay. Uh, while he's providing that, uh.
So, Council President, if I may, so, so if, if I, if I just I, I, I want, uh, uh, this, this is amazing, because he's not answering the questions, but it is my understanding that it isn't true that New Jersey HMFA requires a pilot. They suggest that you get a pilot as it helps with the undrive requirement. So I wanna see the document that says that it's a requirement. Okay?
I'll be doing it.
All right, any other, while he's looking for that, any other questions pertaining to this item?
I have a whole bunch more, but I'll give the four, you know, I know that you need other.
I'll give another two minutes. Any other councilmembers? Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Council President. So, I have a question, but while I do ask the question, I'm gonna just point out a few things to the community. Uh, Council President, can you hear me clearly? I, I have no answers. Can you hear me clear?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay. So, I wanna make a few things clear to the public. And in relative to the pilot agreement and relative to the ERG tax, tax credits, the tax credits that was given to the, to the city of Patterson by the state of New Jersey is an acknowledgement by the state that Patterson economically is not doing what the tax credits are in place for one specific reason. And that is to ingest, inject economic growth, residual return that can produce long-term economic stabilization to the community through the injection of of, of tax credits. And, you know, act to, to actually stimulate investors to come in and purchase these tax credits, so we can put something in place that will promote long-term growth as well. The pilot agreement, the normal process for pilot agreement, the way in which all other private municipalities use a pilot agreement, they utilize a pilot to do pretty much the same, to develop and promote economic growth. If a business is going to come into the community, a business like Amazon, or a business like Warhawk. Well, I had a request. Listen, on Riverside Terrace location, and they were told to get the HTLL out of Patterson and turn around because we weren't interested. My concern and my question to the Director, and he didn't challenge
Please, ask your question, Council. Your, your time, your time is up. Just ask you, ask you a question, please.
My question to the Director is, where is the economic growth? Where is the economic growth that is going to be promoted by the use of the tax credits and the use of the pilots, if it's fact was being projected or, or, or provided to us? Does he, that this project would not create any residual, uh, gradables for the community, no minimal jobs, under a hundred jobs?
Thank you, Councilman.
Economic, uh, bill for the community. Now, I'd love to get the Director's, uh, perspective on the use of the tax credits and the pilots.
Thank you, Director.
Buddy, that back in October, um, when we approved of the development agreement for this project, we made a series of concessions based on the good feedback from councilmembers with regards to how we can make the project even more sustainable and ultimately helpful for the community. And so where I sit, when it comes to economic development and, and building off of the strength that a city has, things like Hinchcliffe Stadium, um, are critical because they're currently derelict and not provide any opportunity for many of our youth um, in the city that could use, you know, a place to, to workout, and to recreate, and to do a whole bunch of different elements that, uh, are slated for the city. Uh, it's also not contributing at all to the asset base of the city in regard to taxation. And so when we're able to put the project together to include senior housing, a child element that would include daycare, as well as parking that's gonna ultimately serve both, not only Hinchcliffe Stadium, the visitor center that's proposed across the way in terms of the falls, but also the, this, the park that's also slated to come. That's gonna help open up the next part of the neighborhood, which includes, um, the built on Total Avenue, which I think could also become great market and or mixed income housing. And then ultimately, we also have the ability to go down the hill and serve Ryle Avenue, which I think is also derelict and really needs to be given some attention. So by taking these tax credits and use them as a public good, not only do we reflect upon, capitalize on that history, which is when Hinchcliffe Stadium was built, it was built during the Great Depression. Well, here we are in the midst of another, you know, major pandemic or challenge that is, you know, economic in nature. Uh, here we have the ability to, to kind of do something that's gonna be powerful for the city. And in my humble opinion, it's also critical because it also shows the power of economic development as it raises cultural history, as well as some of the, the wrongs of this nation. So I, I see this as, basically, not just an amazing project for Patterson, I see it as an amazing project for the region, and ultimately for America. And as the nation continues to grapple with a whole host of different, um, challenges, things like this, that I think will go over into future investment, future jobs, and future ratables by stabilizing the worst and hardest-hit elements of the city, which is currently derelict and idle.
Madam, MDA?
Yes, I just, I just wanted to jump in here too, as, as Mike stated, and emphasize one of the points, um, that, that EDA has lots of different types of tax credits. The ERG tax credits in particular, if you, if you look at that program, it's not necessarily for the primary purposes, purposes for job growth. That's, you know, that's more growth New Jersey and some of the other programs. This one, as defined by the EDA, is incentive for developers and businesses to address revenue gaps in development projects defined as having insufficient revenues to support the project debt service under a standard financing scenario. That means that these are projects that are public good projects that aren't supposed to make a profit necessarily. And that's how we're getting a free stadium out of this, this project. And I think it's something that we have to.
Agree?
Well, if you think about it, the, the, the taxpayers are not paying for a stadium, the school district is not paying for a stadium. That's why the ERG tax credits fill those gaps and help support this larger program. So that's, that's a really important piece of this because, you know, this CEO of New Jersey EDA has emphasized this a time and again, that the ERG credits are very specific. And, and that's why we're using them for, um, its credit here in Patterson.
Uh, Madam B, the item that we have before us is not the use of the ERG credits. I just wanna remind everyone.
Correct.
Council, the council as a whole, I believe, don't agree the way in, in the way in which these credits were used. So let's not justify how we're using the tax credits for the stadium, because it's not gonna help, hear me out, it's not gonna help the cause.
All I'm saying is I'm clarifying that, that the tax credits are different than growth tax credits, for example.
Understood, but I wanna keep reminding. The President, the Council. Councilman, I keep muting you for racing, you clapping, and then from back to sound, I'm muting everyone, just you. Say it, Council. Uh, he keep on muting himself, um.
Would you say, Council President?
Councilman, I said, I said that I keep on muting you and everyone else, because there's background sound, you know, there's sound in the background. And that's the only reason I'm muting you and everyone else. It's not just you, I'm muting everyone that's, that's there right now in the meeting. Um, so the sentiment of my colleagues is that, and again, we're not gonna go there because it's already took place, but this credit should be used for a better good, right? For, to create ratables for the city, to provide some relief to the taxpayers. That's, that's perfect, we understand. But right now, just like we had a project before that we had, we had to entertain, right now we're entertaining a pilot for a project that the credits were already awarded, we can't do nothing about that right now. We have to analyze what's be, before us. Now, I'm gonna ask the Director that when a question is asked, trying to get to the point of the question, and does not expand on the answer. We wanna hear the answer to the question asked, please. Uh.
Council President?
Councilman Vela?
Thank you. Uh, Director, uh, why we cannot start in the housing component of two percent?
Say that again?
Oh, my God. Are you listening?
Well, yeah, you broke up.
Okay. Why we cannot start at ten percent in the housing component?
Because HMFA requires that the top element of the percentage rate for revenue is six point two eight percent, which is where we currently are with the project.
So, so why, as a council, we wanna amend it to ten percent? Why we don't put it for ten percent?
Because the Housing Mortgage Finance Agency won't accept that.
So we cannot start, uh, uh, at ten percent in the pilot?
That is correct. And that's what I explained to you during our committee meeting that was, I believe, two weeks ago.
No, Council, uh, Mr., uh, Mr., uh, Director, I recall, I probably don't have the right language, but I don't, I'm not short of memory. My question to you was, and to the two individual that the only question I could ask was, and I asked the same question, and he said that he will start at four percent. And I went like this, no, 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 no four percent. So somehow, a six percent was showing up today. Now, I'm saying why we don't start at ten percent?
Well, what I tried to illustrate during that meeting, Councilman, is that there's a kind of a floor of one percent, a ceiling of six point two eight percent. And so that's as allowable as a way to ultimately help support the creation of affordable housing. And so what we've done, and one of the things that I was going to announce during our Tuesday meeting, is that previous to, um, again, this isn't new, we've been working on this for, since October, since it's been ratified. We've had all sorts, and again, Council President, I had a couple of talking points to start out, and we also have a presentation.
Uh, please, please, don't, do not jump from question to question, please, have that respect, because I got several questions.
In the interest of time, uh, you will get your chance, uh, Director. Just answer the Councilman's question, if you don't mind.
The, the, okay, so, so the point is, no, we can't because of HMFA. So the six point two eight percent is the cap that they put on the ability to pull in, um, pilot revenue for the city based on the need for building affordable and supportive housing.
Okay, so Director, where is, and I'm not saying I don't believe in you, you know, uh, the Bible says that every man is a liar, so I, I wanna believe in you, you know? And, uh, where is the document that supports your statement?
Well, Councilman, that's what, um, Councilwoman Maritza Davila was asking, and I'm happy to forward that to, again, this is a, you know, it's a, it's a first reading. And so there's plenty of time to review the documents of which we have, and I'm happy to substantiate, and also we have our development team that's on the line that can also talk about many of the other affordable housing projects they've done throughout the state, all, many of which have been funded through the Housing Mortgage Finance Agency as the leading agency for being able to do supportive housing and affordable housing.
Okay, uh, Director, do you have a pretty idea, a pretty idea how much of the taxes owed by the city, uh, for the, uh, taxes owed by the border ed, and sewer and taxes in the property that are not up to date? Or you have the number figure on that?
I don't.
Okay, do you have a rough number, at least?
In terms of sewer and back taxes owed by the schools, I don't know what that has to do with this project, but.
Sure, I know, sir, I have a document that state that the taxes is not paid and is not up to date, and the sewer is not paid up to date. So my question is, my question is, you know, and I just wanna know how far you know about this property, and 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 if you could answer that they, they, if they own us taxes and sewer and all that stuff.
Councilman, can you wrap it up?
Council President.
I actually, hold on a minute, I actually stopped the clock, whenever the Director was speaking, I would stop my clock.
Okay.
Started back on when you were on, uh Councilwoman Davila.
Alright.
Director, so it's been about fifteen, twenty minutes, you still haven't sent the document that you said you have, because Council President said, you have it, you said yes. I'm looking at my email, I still don't have it. I just, explain to me, what is developer, right? Why can't they afford this project? Why, why do we have to give them this abatement?
Uh as I've said previous times.
I, I, I'm trying to figure out what, where, where's their skin in the game in this? And to me, it seems as though they really, without this, they, they cannot do this project.
Look, I think.
They still got money.
Well, I'm gonna, listen, I appreciate the Councilwoman, and you've been very helpful in terms of getting us in terms of where we are with the project. At the end of the day, we put forward a redevelopment agreement that was very clear, that there are certain discrete funding sources that we're gonna go after based on the comments and the um alterations that we made to the project with regards to abiding by senior housing as well as the preschool. So what the development team put together, and they're here on the call as well, is to illustrate those funding sources and the requirements that they put forward. And all I'm doing is saying that that's what we have put into the two financial arrangements or agreements that we have. So there's the ordinance in order to go into it, and the financial agreements that support them. And so, the other thing is that we wanna make sure that we reflect upon the history of Hinchcliffe Stadium, both with regards to its operations and management, so that we're making sure that, because our other partner here is the Public School District, right? So the reality is, we wanna make sure that it sort of remains.
Right, yeah, Director, the question.
Council President, he's telling me to ask the question.
This meeting is gonna be really long, and I'm not liking it at all. She has to.
He always, always want to answer the question.
Council, Councilwoman, Councilman Jackson, please, um, let's not interrupt, if you ask, if you ask for the floor, I'll give you the floor.
Let him answer the question.
Councilman, um, I mean, the Director Powell.
Job, making questions.
Question was. Councilman, you're being disruptive right now, I need, I'm trying to run a meeting, I'm trying to run a meeting, and you're not letting me.
You're going to play before job, just muting and running a meeting. Making sure that the public gets the answers to the questions that we're asking, it's the public that's asking these questions, it's not the council members. Or any council members, the Councilwoman has to go back.
Council President, Council President.
Councilwoman, yes.
All, all I wanna do is here, I don't, I don't wanna have an argument, I, I don't want, I don't, I don't want this to be that type of meeting. I just want the questions answered. And it is obvious to me, it's, it's, it's almost an hour into this meeting, and still questions are not being answered. Alright, and so, you know, I Googled here, New Jersey H M F A, the underwriting website. It doesn't say that they will now just not approve the developer, the developer needs to put up more security, what security is developer putting up? Where's their skin in the game, Director, answer that question to me.
I will, and I'm gonna ask the development team to jump in as well.
Oh, wait, you're, you're my Director, I wanna hear from you first, that will get.
Councilwoman, we are in a partnership agreement, this is a public-private partnership, okay, so I'm gonna answer the question that you have. In order to answer thoroughly and completely, and so the fact remain your project, we are all in this together, and I'm trying to answer your question, and that's why I have our team here. And so there are, I, I, I've tried to say the same thing a few times, just that there's a certain percentage that's tied with the H M F A. Um but we have Joe Portelli from RPM as well as Baka, and also Wilson, and so I'm gonna ask them to join in as well.
Okay, Council President. Council President.
Councilwoman Davila.
Okay, so here it says, in general, the New Jersey H M F A has found that a project without a tax abatement or a project with a tax abatement under the law's true tax exemption statute has problems demonstrating financial feasibility. Lack of tax evasion presumed to the H M F A statute may raise the risk to the H M F A and therefore may require additional security in the form of increased debt service coverage and or escrow of additional funds. Please tell me, where is your skin in the game, please?
Uh, if I, if everybody, if this Portelli, I'll be here. And what, if the project was subject to full taxes, if we're able to be built in the first place, which we would be not, but that's a separate discussion.
No, I'm sorry, I was gonna ask about full taxation first. If we didn't include this today, how would it be in terms of full taxation, so, go ahead.
Well, I think the overarching point is that, would it be, because wouldn't be able to fit a built project in the first place without additional millions of dollars to exist.
I'm sorry, I just wanted you to repeat, because I didn't hear you, you said that you would not be able to afford it. No, Council President, I didn't hear him, I wanted him to repeat what he said. You said that you would not be able to afford the project if you did not have this abatement, is that what you said?
Right, because there wouldn't be enough cash to support uh regular debt financing. So, um, let's say, using round figures, uh let's say, if the building was able to uh be subject to full taxes, pay enough enough dollars in taxes, we couldn't afford to pay full taxes because uh the rents are low, the low margin inheritance. We wouldn't be, wouldn't be able to support enough financing to pay for all the construction costs. Uh so, we would need millions of dollars more in additional subsidy to have sources equal uses. And in addition to the extra subsidy that doesn't exist, the agency, when I say the agency, I mean the H M F A, would implement some additional underwriting requirements that uh make it even harder to support the mortgage financing that we need, by having more cushion between the amount of uh uh revenue that you have and the amount of, of the portion of that that goes to uh paying your mortgage every month. Having additional escrows to account for potential fluctuations in real estate taxes. You know, there are a number of values to the pilot, especially when it comes to affordable housing, but uh it gives us the stability that the project needs over a long period of time during that term of affordability, so that there aren't those wild swings, that we don't have to fund this gigantic escrow that could otherwise be used for making good, high-quality housing improvements or public improvements.
Council President, just quickly, just quickly, okay, so just keep Portelli.
Uh, Councilwoman, Councilwoman, before you continue, Ryan, could you check, I'm getting text messages from people stating that they cannot hear Mr. Portelli. Do you see what's going on? This is important.
Yeah.
So, so Council President, can I continue? Can I continue because I want to?
Yes, Councilwoman.
So, so. The developer, you've not presented the project, right, you presented it, you didn't know the cost?
Councilwoman, I'm sorry, um, can I ask the President a quick question, Ryan wants to know, we have no, the public has no audio? Mr. President?
People cannot hear, so I got a text message, you couldn't hear.
Okay, alright, let me let him know, thank you, thank you. Can you speak again, Mr. Portelli, just to make sure that the public is uh hearing you?
Uh, testing, testing. If, if I need to call you.
I, 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 I could hear you, but I don't know if it's.
You can hear? Mr. Portelli, we can hear you, just that there's like a, like a glass of time, we can hear you.
I mean, I could also jump in too, if you guys want to, uh.
I'll, I'll try to, I'll put it on my phone, uh hold on a second.
But I, I do wanna sort of um step back a second just to sort of follow up on the comments that uh my partner made. Um, the reality from the, the tax abatement, the tax abatement, H M F A requires that they are um determinous with the mortgage. So if the mortgage is thirty years, the tax abatement is thirty years, there's no difference, because by H M F A, they want to ensure that there is a consistency in terms of the tax abatement, in terms of the taxes in conjunction with uh the mortgage. When we submit the application and give the R D A back in October, we then said, and in the R D A, we said that we would come back for a tax abatement for it. The reason why also that it's not a shorter period of time, it kind of functions the same way as a mortgage in a house. And so, for example, if you have a ten-year mortgage in your house, you pay higher mortgage payments. And so in order to keep the rents at the numbers that they are, which are between nine hundred ninety dollars and twelve hundred and forty dollars, we have to have this little longer mortgage period, which also requires a longer tax rate, which is thirty years.
Longer tax rate.
Standard tax rate, and then the standard mortgage, so we sort of, it should, it's determined, they require that. So there's some difference that they, all they require is that if you have, if you have a twenty-year mortgage, you have a twenty-year tax rate, but thirty-year mortgage, thirty-year tax rate. But because our project is fifty-seven point five percent of A M I, and because it's for seniors, um it's required, the only way to keep the rents down, or keep the rents down, in that nine hundred thousand, eleven hundred, twelve million dollar range, is for it to be thirteen, for it to be thirty years. If we tried to do it for ten years or fifteen years, the rents would um be a lot higher and wouldn't be affordable, and they wouldn't be um sixty percent of A M I, it wouldn't qualify for the H M F, for the um, for the tax credits.
Council President.
Councilman Bellas.
Um, I ask this question, um, I wrote it here, uh this is for thirty-year abatement now, not thirty-five, right?
Yes, thirty.
Okay, so, why we cannot do a fifteen-year abatement?
Yeah, what I was saying before is that the rents would go up, it's just like a mortgage on a house, or any, if you have a shorter period of time, then the mortgage payments go up. And so by having thirty years, you also are able to keep the rents at um nine hundred thousand, eleven hundred, twelve million dollars. So it's, it's a function of the rents that the mortgage and the tax abatement are both thirty years.
So, so uh you cannot come back in fifteen years and request an extension for another fifteen years, you, you know?
Now that, H, H M F A doesn't allow for that, H M F A requires, in order for them to provide you with a mortgage, that you have a tax abatement that is um the same amount of time as their mortgage, that's a requirement.
The, the, uh, do you, uh, do you recall, do you recall a question, uh, when we was uh ready to um approve the development agreement, that I, I asked you, on the record, and my colleagues remember this, uh what, the one I spoke, I know, that uh, and, and the question was directly to you, because I like your tie and I like your suit, remember that? Okay, um, I remember, you remember that day, so, uh, and, and also you're gonna remember that I asked you in, in, in the record, and you could show the record, and uh, and I asked you, are you planning to come to request money or tax abatement or pilot to the city, and you stated no, in that time, and I asked you, so you are wealthy enough to carry this development? And you said yes.
That's not, well, the, the conversation was around, um, at least in my recollection, was around the bond, I actually think the Council President was the one who was also um wanting to make sure that we didn't come back for a bond, you know, like, and so we've done a lot in the last, um, and since October, we have completed the construction documents. We're at this point, around sixteen, seventy-five days from getting the shovel in the ground, we're ready to go into construction. But this is, this is sort of a standard operating procedure that happens with H M F A, we're not asking for anything that isn't required, we're not doing anything above the odds. What we're doing is, what H M F A just really requires, that they wanna make sure that, it asks us that we don't say we're building low-income housing and then build market rate housing and then use their mortgage accordingly. They wanna make sure that when we say it's affordable housing, that it's affordable housing for thirty years. They don't want, they don't want us to do something other than that. So they require mortgages that way and that the taxes are that way. Um, also issue around the bond, and we didn't do that, we haven't come back to you for bond.
So when, when, when you're supposed to be in front.
Councilman.
Yeah.
Uh, I give you the floor, I give you the floor again, just let me ask a few questions.
No problem.
Mister, Mister Wilson, um.
Yes.
Councilwoman asks, Councilwoman Davila asked this question earlier, how much money are you putting into the project?
You read it, I believe in terms of what's been done now, I know we actually paid for.
Uh, at the end of the day, how much money are you putting in, in, out of your capital, how much money are you putting in?
I mean.
Funding sources that you wanna go out and get, talking about your money into the project.
Me, yeah, I mean, we are, my portion is uh forty percent of the equity, that's my, that's my requirement, that's my portion, if that's what you're asking. And um, and so that's, and so that's.
How much, how much, how much is the project, the total project?
The total project, in terms of the equity portion of it, I'm responsible for equity as well, and I'm, and I've been paying, I mean, and the reality is, is that from this point until the end of the project, I have been contributing to.
Mister Wilson, just entertain my question, if not, I'm not gonna entertain this either, just entertain my question, please. My question is simple, how much is the total project? I know it's not, doesn't have nothing to do, in part, we're only discussing the budget right now. I just wanna know, how much is the total project in total, how much?
The total project is um seventy-five million dollars. You're talking about everything, right?
Everything, out of the seventy million, how much, you know, you get your tax credit, you turn them into, and you realize the tax credits, now you're getting other funding sources, how much is you and your partners actually putting into the project is my question? Physical money, physical money. Now, you will not get back, that is an investment on the.
That we won't get back?
Correct.
Um, and that, so we, our goal is to, in terms of equity in project, is to get all of our resources that we put into the project back, and that's the goal. Like, both is not to lose money in the project, or not to make money in the project.
Okay, let me, let me start over, let me start over. What I mean is, I don't wanna hear that you're putting in money now, but you will get the money later after the credits have been realized. I wanna know, basically, if the project is seventy-five million, you're getting thirty from the credits, you're getting X amount from the state, you're getting X amount from another source, I wanna know how much do you have to put in out of your pocket?
What is their investment? What is their, Council President, what is their investment, I've been asking this question.
I asked, Councilwoman, I asked a question in that form, but I'm not getting the answer, that I'm, you know, looking to hear, so.
Can I just say one thing then? So, they can't answer what the invest, their investment is, so I'm gonna ask this, what's their developer's speak? Are they getting out of here?
Let's, let me answer the question first, please. Answer my question if you can, if not, we're gonna, we're gonna leave it as not answered, and we're gonna go to the next item. How much are you putting in?
We're pledging back three, three million dollars.
What's that?
We're pledging back approximately three point three million dollars, more represents the deferred fee on the half. There's more, there's more to the story here aside from uh the capital contributed. And any real estate development, but there's speed, development, affordable housing, market rate, retail. The idea is to get your money back to them, uh and your.
I'm telling you, I'm telling you why I'm asking this question, I'm telling you, I'm telling you why I'm asking this question.
Okay.
And in your defense also, in finance, Councilwoman Davila, you recall this, in finance, we also, you know, if they were not making this a senior housing, I would never entertain this pilot, just so you know. But we asked, so we don't put burden on the school system in that area, we asked, and you recall, you were in that meeting, and this was Shahidulit that brought this up, in this, we requested that this building be turned into senior housing, and at the same time, we try to meet a need of that area, which is to put a, a early childhood center. And that's how we were able to get this whole thing done when it came to, to, to the developers' agreement. And I also added that they would not come back and ask us to bond for them, and that's why they haven't come back, it's in there. So, I'm looking, you know, I'm not looking to, to drill them, I just wanna get clarification on a lot of things, getting a lot of questions from the public. Now, my question also is this, let's say we approve this pilot for you, are you able to sell this building right away and take that money? Take the, whatever profit you get from it?
No, no, and uh, this is a finance project, uh there's the housing, there's not housing, I'll speak about the housing first. The H M F A uh does not allow you to. The H M F A uh, does not allow you to sell immediately. And they also, any future sale, they have to approve, uh, whether it's um.
Hold on a minute, after how many years they allow you to sell?
I, I don't know that.
We can't, we can't hear, his connection is bad, his connection is really bad.
Yeah, you ask, if, if I'm not mistaken, I think it's around fifteen years, um, in terms of the timing, I mean, two components of this. One is that we don't own the stadium at all, it's just, it's a lease. And so there's no capacity to sell the stadium, there's no capacity to sell, sell the restaurant, exhibition space. Because we're ju, we're doing this as a lease and at the completion of the earth tax raise, it goes back to the school district. As all, you know, we sort of started with the school district, the school district not only asks for us to do a lease. They have a hundred and eighty days of the year for their sports. Plus they get fifty percent of the net profits, so they're really a partner in the context of the exhibition space and the, and the restaurant. Um, for my, I think around the tax, but this is around fifteen years, um, but it's something that we set the, be for sure in terms of the, of the time, but I think it's fifteen.
So Mister Wilson, Mister Wilson, so qu, question, under regular taxation, how much would this property actually pay?
Uh, I mean, uh, we won't go through that now, I mean, as of now, uh, it's, you know, as it's now zero. I think Joe has the exact number of what the different scenarios, we're gonna do several different scenarios for you. In terms of what the different scenarios would be right now, obviously it's zero right now, all of it is zero and right now they have.
When the, when the building, when the building is up, is my question, we know it's zero, everybody knows it's zero.
Yeah, but I guess the big issue, and this is the challenge with this, uh, there's so many things about this project that we wouldn't do. Because of that, we, we added a full to the project.
Mister Wilson, the reason I'm asking this question, the reason I'm asking this question is not to prove how bad of a deal this is. We understand that we made you get, you know, create this into affordable housing, you could, you could say, so we understand that, that's why I'm here. And I allowed this for this to go on, you know, it was brought up by, by my vice president and I allowed this to go on. So I'm not doing this to make it seem how bad this deal is, you are meeting a, a need in the area also. When it comes to early childhood and, 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 and having senior, senior, um, senior building there. So. Just answer the question.
Council president, I, I, council president, I just want them to put on record. What the benefits are for the community, because when, so, 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 I know you're mentioning all the area, you know, that we did discuss this before. Right, 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 right.
Do you, I'm, I'm sorry with that, if you want me to go to the benefits of the community, that's why, if you want me to put on the record for that. Okay, um. Yeah, Joe, go, Joe, we'll do something, Joe, you go over the, the budgetary issues and I'll do.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Rivera, just about full taxes, and I'm gonna say, I'm gonna start by saying if, because it is a big if, assuming that. We would be able to pull together the additional millions of dollars of subsidy that we would need to build the project. In the first place under full taxes, which I don't know that that's actually possible, uh, it might be about two hundred thousand dollars. And again, that's if, if that uh, we can pull together additional sources that would be necessary to do that, and I, I don't think that that's possible. Assuming it gets built in the first place.
And I, and I, this uh. I want to add this councilwoman's question, you're gonna be asked, I wanted to ask the council question.
Go ahead, Mister Wilson.
Oh, no, wait, wait, council president, they still haven't answered.
Which part, councilwoman?
In detail, their investment, their portion of the investment.
Well, we, we already know that, you just wanna hear it from them because. Councilwoman, they are gonna say it, but just so you know, this is something that we already drilled for months. Came out everywhere in every newspaper, just so you know, uh, we know that their investment is minimal. Right now, we're not entertaining, they used to the credits, we already, we already did that already, you know, we passed that already. We're not discussing the stadium at all, we're discussing a, a pilot, which is a payment in little taxes, right? Just like Councilwoman Morris spoke in the past, there's a county portion that you don't pay, so for example, he stated two hundred thousand, let's just say that number is accurate. Part of that two hundred is gonna go to the district, to the county, to the county.
Yes.
And some of it goes to the, to the school district, just so you know, so. All I'm saying is, we already know that this is minimal. That the, the contribution is minimal to this, we already know this, we're discussing a pilot right now. We're not discussing the credits, we already had this, this argument when the credits were awarded for this project. So could we stay with this pilot for this entity? You did have a relevant question, now Mister Wilson, could you tell us the benefit of this, you know, this project to the community?
Well, I think that there's, there's several benefits that we, uh, who we are important to this, this community, one is, is the, is interstate. It's, it has been a use for twenty two years, it had, it's not paying taxes, it hasn't paid any taxes and putting it back on. The, putting it back into the community is important, um, when we spoke with the school district, when we spoke to the Kennedy High School, it was important for them. That this, because they were playing over in the park, there was, they, they felt like it was unhealthy, it was environmental hazards. So it was a really important community benefit that we actually be able to put this back onto the school district, and that is multiple sports, it's not, you know, it's baseball, it's also football. South of the cross track field, which is a, you know, a, a benefit to the school, also just being for residents to, to um, use. I mean, the other issue too right now in the context of COVID is it is open air freedom, which is different than having a closed, um, closed arena, it's an open air arena. Which is what people are doing in terms of graduations and programs, they're having these open facilities. The other component of it is the restaurant and exhibition space that's dedicated to, that's dedicated to conversations around race and social justice. Which, you know, without, you know, without Jim Colby, it's no longer a league. Um, the affordable housing and the childcare places, something that we spoke to you guys, that meant that was a joint decision-making process. In terms of having, um, having seniors, and the other thing that needs to be, I think, the sort of miss, is that. The six point two eight percent of taxes is only on the senior units, it's not, it's ten percent on everything else. So it's actually ten percent on the childcare, it's ten percent on the garage, it's ten percent on everything else, so the only thing that pays that six point two eight percent. Is the portion that is for the senior units, and so do you have more, um, you have more units for, um, seniors? It was very clear to us that no one wanted more of, of a burden on the school district or more children. So affordable units or family units or even market rate units does not mean a, that the school district won't, they wanted. And, and, but they wanted a project that was for seniors, and so we took your advice and redesigned the project. To make sure that seniors would have it, and then when you asked us to do the childcare, we increased the building height, and we increased the whole roar. Just for, for childcare, so those are the different community benefits that, um, we worked on together.
Thank you, thank you, Mister Wilson. Mister, Mister Portelli, I, I have a question, and, and I'll let you get into that. Where do you get that two hundred, uh, two hundred thousand from, how much is this building, how much would be the, the, the value of this building once it's built?
Uh, well, there are a number of different ways to value real estate. There's the, there's a couple of different approaches, and there's the income approach, which we look at the value of the, the income stream.
We wanna know, we wanna know how this building will be assessed, assessed, assessed value, we're talking about.
Uh, I can't speak for the assessor, but.
Let me, let me interrupt then, how much would it cost to build this building, like, once it's, it's done, how much does it cost to build this building?
Uh, the total development costs on the housing are about twenty eight million dollars.
On that building, twenty eight?
Yes, but it's not worth that because of the, the affordable housing income restrictions.
Okay, can you say that it's worth, let's just throw a number then, right, just to play, play, play with numbers, how much would it worth?
If. Based on the, the, based on it as an affordable housing project, it'd be worth about four point five million dollars. So there, there's a good uh, indicator of disconnect.
And it's only worth four million dollars? So you spent twenty, you spent twenty eight million, that it's only worth four point five million?
That's affordable housing in a nutshell, yes, that's why we need the subsidies that we do to make do the building.
And the, the, the mortgage, essentially the mortgage is for, that's the mortgage that's left over. I mean, the reality is that this, we wouldn't, this wouldn't, we wouldn't have this project, we wouldn't have first floor, um, childcare, we wouldn't have a six story building. We wouldn't have light gauge steel, there's so much in this project that would be very different if we actually trying to do it as a market rate. Would be thick construction, it may be townhouse, and I, what I think about is what doesn't exist at this uh, park. Like, that project is a, you know, a project that they made it, but that's, I can see this sort of, the notion that that's what you can sort of try to do. This project wouldn't look anything like this, and so it's hard to say, look at the construction hot price and say, what would you do? Because it's prevailing age, it has tax credits, it's senior, affordable housing, it's all these components of it that you can't take out. Because that's the project, like, that's, that's the project, if we were just gonna build a, 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 a four story building that was very. We would, this, this whole design, this whole process would have been radically different, and I, I mean, I, they probably got time, they probably got two families, three family units. Like, that's what it would be, because that's because of the market setting was in the game.
And uh, before we get the question done, I.
So. Council, Councilwoman Khan, Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman, uh, Davila.
All right, my turn?
Yes, Councilwoman Khan.
I just wanna say to, uh, Mister Wilson, you were talking about the, um, the affordable housing piece for seniors, um. Without, you think that anybody would have came in without the other components from affordable housing daycare center, um. The Nego exhibit, would anybody come in here to do any project for history of stadium? Because it's not tax revenue, it's not bringing nothing in, it's for the school system, so to, to do the, the revenue for, I mean, all through the stadium. You, to get the other piece.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, to be transparent, there, there was no other way to sort of pull it together. Uh, and then, there was no other way, no one was, if no one was doing it, no one was interested in it, it's the pullback, it was a component of it. Um, to bring in a developer like R P M that has, that has the relationships and experience to pull off a project of this size. But there was no interest from anyone that really to, to do that, um, at this moment.
All right, let me just finish, I'm sorry, council president, but, um, you know, I'm not quite sure, but, you know, when I saw the private and had affordable housing for my junior. I really wish you could have affordable housing for, for other people, for our regular, regular residents. But, um, whether we want to accept it or not, I made sure I went out and I pulled out this because, let me tell you something, I have gotten more phone calls now. Uh, for senior housing, and, and as of now, we got six in housing authority, we have twelve. In private, meaning that there are private people that has these, uh, developments, which is based on income. Based on income, but when he talked about affordable housing, and, and what I have discovered now, uh, with COVID nineteen. We're losing seniors with your partners, we're losing seniors, and let me tell you something, they can't afford to stay where they're at. And they need affordable housing, they can't, their partners have left, they're dying from the virus. They, they, you know, they used to get another social security check, they used to get another pension check, all that stops. Uh, and I get, I would say every day I get a call from all over the city, it's not just my ward. That's looking for senior housing, so when I saw the senior housing piece in there, when I know what seniors. And what, what's happening now for, for our city, um.
Can you wrap it up, Councilwoman?
But the seniors are dying, I mean, unless you get the calls, maybe you, people, maybe can't understand it, but I know what I'm getting. And I know that the affordable housing piece, if it, if it comes with that, that we need the affordable housing piece for our seniors because. Please, I, I, I give this out every day, I give this out every day, for people to go put applications in for different senior places. And you know what, and I'm looking forward to, uh, senior housing, I'm looking forward because. The number is huge out there.
We, we.
A councilman, the, the numbers are huge for. Uh, was the COVID, they got lost, I understand that, I lost my husband to COVID, and he was a senior.
We're, we're up to three minutes, Councilwoman, now.
Council president.
Yes, uh. I think Councilman Jackson was next, Councilman Jackson.
Very quickly, uh, to the council president, um, can you tell me the footprint of the actual building for the C development footprint? Hundred by two hundred, what is, what is the, the, the square, the footprint, square footage, footprint?
It's about twelve thousand square foot footprint.
Twelve thousand square foot? Is that, is that just the, uh, the bottom floor?
That's just the bottom floor, yeah, it's an L shape.
L shape, and uh, how many, how many floors is this?
Six. I'm sorry, Councilman, sorry, it's four, it's fourteen thousand, it's fourteen thousand, I'm sorry. Fourteen thousand square foot, for like, six stories.
What's the dimensions? I don't have the.
Oh, it's a, it's a. Yeah, it's a double loaded corridor building, so it's about sixty five to seventy feet wide.
You don't, you, you don't have the specifics you're saying about, what, what is the, the dimensions of the property of the piece that you guys are building on?
The property is, uh, about seven tenths of an acre, and that's square.
I'm, I'm just asking you some question, what's the dimensions of the building itself? One hundred by thirty, the, the dimensions?
I, I don't know the dimensions off the top of my head, but it's an L.
So, was there any solvency agreement, uh, 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 solvency, uh, uh, proof that asked for from you guys from the developers? On behalf of the, uh, the administration?
I don't understand the question.
Were you guys asked to produce any documentation proving your solvency and moving forward with this project? The capabilities of paying for it, if you asked it to, to show proof that you guys are solid enough to, to, to.
This is like a train, Councilman, so we're not there yet, the train's still moving from one station to the next. The underwriting happens each step of the way, which is part of how we're able to move, because underwriting happens through this.
You can't put me on the clock, he's gonna jump in and start, and I'm asking the, the, the developers.
I, I, I agree with you, uh.
Yeah, I imagine that can talk.
Any, any other person in this meeting, please, let me acknowledge you, then you speak, Councilman Jackson, continue.
So was there a, a, a documentation, I'm, I'm just doing a deal today.
Councilman Jackson, you're breaking up. You're breaking up, but I had to steal your question, I'm gonna repeat it, um, Mister Wilson, Mister Portelli, Mister Powell. Before you speak, raise your hand because we're not in the chamber and we can't have everyone speak at the same time. The question is simple, this project was awarded for you guys to, to do. It was to know, they have asked, the administration asked you, how sold you are, do you have money to be able to? Do this project, is the question, I can't simplify the question, but that's what you must do now. Any one of you wanna answer, Mister Portelli, Mister Wilson, Mister Powell? You have to bring those documents to the station, Mister Wilson.
At, at the outset, at the project, no, because. Very thin way back, uh, around this time last year, when we were doing the redevelopment agreement, ultimately done in October, no, we had nothing, we needed the redevelopment agreement to get started. Um, you know, we had people who were ready to make, uh, to provide the funds, but we needed a real project first. But now that we have a real project, we've got Ace approvals along the way, uh, we've got some closing calls, disaster. And all those things are coming together, and that's what I can tell you.
Councilman Jackson, is, is there any way you can, is there any way you can park somewhere because? The noise, you have some great questions, but the noise is bad.
Okay.
Get on mine, please.
Very good, I'll, uh, council president, my next question, I don't think it was, it was asked already by a councilwoman dabbler, but it was never answered. What, what exactly is the developer speak from the project?
Mister Wilson, Mister Portelli, Mister Powell, which one of you will answer that question?
Answer the question.
Mister Portelli, I can hear you.
And that is just a, uh. And that is just a, a bit over, uh, ten percent of the total project, uh, budget. And, uh, I'll give you the detail breakdown between the, the two components. On the housing side, it's approximately three point six million dollars. On the stadium side, we have nine housing components, it's about four point five million. And, uh, those...
Mr. Portelli, hold, hold on a minute. Mr. Wilson, you're familiar with all detail, could you give the numbers? Because we can't hear Mr. Portelli.
Yeah, I will. Uh, I, yeah, so it's, uh, so I, he said like eight point four million dollars. It's three point, uh, for the stadium, it's around four point two or three. I don't have the numbers right in front of me, because for the housing, it's around three, two or three. Because what he was getting to is that we're deferring one point seven. So, even though it's, it ends up being the sort of, the, the eight number, it ends up being close to the six point three, uh, number.
So, it's, it's almost ten, ten percent that you're getting as the number?
It, it's ten percent of the numbers, it, the breakdown is difference in context of the stadium as the house.
We, we understand, you already said that. So, ten percent, we had a, we had to discuss, and I don't mean to get off topic, but the other developer that we discussed before, he was getting like three percent of all the projects he was doing. You're getting ten percent.
Yeah, it's, there's a difference in this, I mean, I think that...
Please.
Uh, well, one, it's the stadium. We are, we are doing this, we don't own the project long-term in context of the stadium. We are doing this really as a charity project for the school district. We are pulling together all of the multiple, because the earned tax credit is not the only tax credit that's coming into this project. We have numerous tax credits, we have historic tax credits that are, um, and we have low-cost tax credit projects, tax credits that are also a component to it that is in addition to this. Uh, we can, this is a public project, like, there's just no way around it. And so what we've done is that we've marshaled our resources, our relationships, our, uh, capacity.
Mr. Wilson, I, I, Mr. Wilson, I don't mean to be rude, but if you want to compare orange to, uh, apples to apples, uh, the whole project is also public, if you think about it, most of it, so nonprofit. You have...
But, but, yeah, but we're, this is not, I mean, RPM is not a, 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 a non-public developer, right? And so you don't have that, well, they don't...
Coming to the table with any money, I...
They don't have a low-cost housing tax credit project, and they don't have an affordable housing project. As in, this project, in a lot of ways, it's, you know, it's four different buildings. It's, um, differences of, it's different tax credits, it's multiple agencies. It's a very complicated project that, um, hasn't been done. And I'm like, I see this, and so, poor, long, yeah, this is what we got to make it happen.
So, Mr. Wilson, I, I understand it's very complicated. It still doesn't change the fact in the difference of the developer's fee, again. But again, this is a discussion, this is a discussion we already had in the past of how bad... Hold on, Councilwoman Jackson, I'm going to give you a throw. Of how bad the process was to allocate this tax credits? But I just want to bring it back again, let's, let's concentrate on the pilot, if you guys don't mind, please? Because we're already past that. We cannot take the project away and give it to somebody else. So, let's concentrate on the pilot. Councilwoman Jackson.
Very good, I'm going, I'm going to try to wrap this quickly as possible, Council President. How many units total in the building, uh, Mr. Wilson?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, okay, very good. So, I just want, I'll wrap it up here. I think that's, that's all the questions that I, that I, you know, really have for the moment. But, you know, I think the stark difference here and the reason why myself, if, you know, it's just not, cannot sit above me, there's a number of different issues here. We understand that you're not, you're not, you're not a non-profit, but therefore, you're not coming to the table with any money anyway. You weren't even asked by the administration to show solvency that you haven't. You just, you just named off about eight or nine different sources and what you're going to get money from. Uh, so you're, so you're not coming to the table with any money for the project, but you guys are walking away with eight point four million dollars. And that's, that's a pretty, that's a pretty big deal. Now, one of the last things I want to point out, two things actually, Council President, is, is, is the number of units that we have. Two things very quickly, and it's very relative to why we should not be giving you a, a pilot. So, I know you're saying we're not talking about some of the agreement for the tax credits as a pilot. So, when you look at the, the, at the square footage, the gentleman said they have about fourteen thousand square feet on the ground floor, which I think is more. You multiply that by six, which is six floors. It gives you the square footage, it's about eight point four thousand square feet. When you divide that by the twenty-eight million dollars they're claiming that it's going to cost, that's two hundred and eighty-five, it costs two hundred and ninety dollars per square foot. That's three times the national average. So, when it tells us that the building's going to cost twenty-eight million dollars to build, but it's only worth four, that's because the, the, the cost of construction is being exacerbated, like, ballooned. The last thing I'll point out, if every single tenant, if every single occupied tenant in the building has one child that goes to private public schools, and if I'm not mistaken, by, by virtue of the pilot, they will be negated from paying county and, and school taxes, right? So, by virtue of the pilot, we're talking about one point six million dollars because each child costs twenty-one thousand dollars a year just to send to, to one of our public schools.
Senior, I'm going to tell you that.
We're talking about one point six million dollars, one point six million dollars that's being negated from the schools when they're only going to be paying seventy-eight thousand dollars a year. Where, again, the, the public is going to be asked to pay for what they're benefiting from their walkaway at eight point four million dollars, and the city is going to also have another price tag to it. I'm done, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman.
We, we must use.
Councilwoman Dabbala's next.
Councilwoman Dabbala, and then Councilwoman Velez.
So, I know the community is watching because we're getting messages of the wazoo, um, but I am going to say this, and I'm going to say it again, and I want to continue to repeat it and repeat it. The three million that they more so say that there's their investment, right? Is it real money? Is that real money?
Yeah, it's a, it's a pledge of the developer's fee. Uh, but Councilman Dabbala, you had asked a number of questions ago about skin in the game, and I didn't get to answer your question because I was having some tech issues, still kind of had, but... There's, uh, more to the story than just the amount of cash invested in these new development projects. We're providing a construction completion guarantee to make sure that this all gets built. So, if for whatever reason, uh, if things go sideways, we have to pay back all the construction, the construction loan financing to, uh, to see that the investor and lender, that this gets built no matter what happens. So, and, uh, that could be, you know, market crash, something goes sideways. Uh, so that's a tremendous amount of risk. Once the building is built, a lot of that risk goes away, but the risk doesn't go away because there's a lot of tax credit compliance work to be done. If those tax credits get recaptured for any reason, whether it's the historic or the affordable or the earned, then we're on the hook to pay that back to the investors with penalty. So, there's still plenty of work to be done in the long run, and that is the risk to us. Um, but also keep in mind that there isn't, these types of public projects, affordable housing or otherwise, especially these public facilities like stadiums, uh, there isn't any real cash flow to speak of to repay that, uh, kind of, uh, traditional equity requirement that you might see with a traditional real estate.
But, what, what's your experience in developing stadiums? I mean, I know we're talking about the basement, but you just mentioned the, the stadium. So, you know, forget that question, because I was going to go, I was going to go through that. We'll keep it to the pilot.
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman.
One way, one way of saying that we have plenty of skin in the game for the long term.
Thank you, Councilman Velez.
Yes, I just, uh, want to ask a question, two questions, actually. Um... So, the gentleman on my right, I don't know his name, but one has a blue, uh, light shirt. He mentioned, uh, before that he had a real project in his hands before the, uh, development agreement. And after they signed the, uh, development agreement, came up to that they have a real project. Do you understand what did you say about real projects, sir?
What I meant to say by that was that it was a real actionable opportunity. Prior to signing the redevelopment agreement, it was still just a concept that we're working on. We weren't sure if you were going to get approval or not to actually work on the opportunity.
So, so, sir, um, uh, I lived thirty, thirty years in Patterson, and probably most of us have lived for many, many years in Patterson. And those viewers out there, they always say that renovating and bringing the Hinkley Stadium to life is a project. And they always considered the Hinkley Stadium as a real project to bring it back to life. Now, the community was looking forward to see the Hinkley Stadium rebuilt back again. It's a historic site, the administration could get funding through other sources to rebuild. The school district could get funding from the state to rebuild the stadium, like our Union City did. Union City did, uh, Union City, uh, put a stadium in top, a school in top of the stadium. And that brought benefit to the community, not a profit to the developer. In this case, you didn't saw a project because it was only the Hinkley Stadium company. But now, you guys decide to add the residential part, senior, because you see a profit at the end of the road. You stated that, uh, this building is twenty-eight million dollars for construction. Now, but you stated that it's not worth it four million dollars. My question will be, if you have the chance to sell it, how much you will be selling it if you invest it twenty-eight million dollars?
Uh, we wouldn't be selling it because, uh, we still, that's not how we operate. We own, we hold our buildings for a long term.
So, if you had the opportunity, if you had the opportunity to sell it, I say you have the opportunity to sell it, and you just stated it's going to worth four million dollars, but you invested twenty-eight million, how much? I give you the opportunity to sell it, how much you will sell it, this building?
Here's your question, Councilman, I think, you're over the two minutes now. Go ahead, Mr. Portelli, answer this question.
I'm telling you that I wouldn't sell it.
If you had the opportunity to sell it, sir?
Well, it, it, um, well, first of all, I'm telling you that we don't sell the assets, but also it would depend on an offer, you know? I, I, it's hard to respond to a question without knowing what, uh, the sales. But I can tell you that we hold our assets for the long term, you know?
Okay.
For years.
So, so, Council colleagues, uh, Councilwoman Minz?
Um, so, in this project, there are seventy-five units. Um, and I know the configuration based on the redevelopment agreement, that there are studio, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom apartments. What are the totals of each?
Uh, it's fifteen two-bedroom units, uh, fifty-five one-bedroom units, and balance our studios.
Okay, so fifteen, fifteen one-bedroom, fifty-five two-bedroom? So, there's fifteen two-bedroom?
Fifteen two-bedrooms, fifty-five one-bedrooms, five studios.
So, what was the purpose of the two-bedroom in case the, uh, one of our seniors needed a caretaker? What, what was the rationale behind the two-bedroom?
Uh, I believe that was the, uh, interest for the two-bedroom, yes.
Another question, when it comes to the, um, senior housing piece and then there's a childcare facility, um, and the, uh, construction piece of it, will there be something that divides for the safety of our children that will be in the childcare facility versus the seniors? Um, what would be protective there? Is there going to be a wall built where you can't have easy access? Is it, um, is it a car key? What, I mean, what type of protection do we have for our seniors and for our, our children that will possibly be housed there?
Well, those uses have separate entrances and access. Um, they're both off of, uh, landscaped courtyard, but they're both separate. Uh, the building would have key fob, uh, access. And, uh, I imagine if the childcare facility is anything like, um, one of the ones that I know, the front door would be, uh, open, and then there's another door behind that to, you know, sign your child in with the proper screening measures.
Um, also, um, Council President, I'm almost gone. There are three hundred and fifty parking spaces, uh, and this is a senior unit. Um, I'm not sure if it's already in the configuration because I don't see it in the agreement, but, uh, it would be nice to have it earmarked for the residents to ensure that they have, uh, first dibs at the parking, um, as well as having handicap accessibility for the building, and as far as parks that are handicapped accessible for, uh, the residents that, that will live in the, in this facility. Another question, um, what type of walls will be, will be placed as far as construction? Um, when the stadium, um, is potentially built, um, with the music and the sound, we have a lot of issues with loud noise in our community already, and these are our seniors. So, what protective mechanism? Is it bright sound, what, what kind of, uh, construction?
Or no odor?
No, 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 no odor. Councilwoman, could we, could we stick, I understand this is somehow related to the building and the quality of life of the building, but how would that influence a vote when it comes to voting on a pilot? Let, let's stick to that.
Council President, the reason why I'm asking, we're voting on the pilot, right? And the pilot is for a thirty-year tax abatement, right? And they come before us for that. We just want to make sure in this project with the seventy-five units, that the safety of children and, and our residents are taking, um, are taken into consideration. We know they're before us for funding, but in the redevelopment agreement, we didn't have the opportunity to ask about the, the differentials of studio fif- fifteen years, fifty-five years. So, we just want to make sure we put it on record that this information is to the public so people know what's included. Um, and I understand that we're here to vote, I'm the pilot, I get that part. But those are some questions that were posed, and I'm just asking those questions because the public, they wanted to know.
And this is, and this is first reading? We also want to have time between now and the second reading to ask any other questions? Uh, so, any, anyone else have any, uh, you want to answer, uh, Councilwoman Minz's question? Or take me to her last question?
Yeah, uh, with respect to sound transmission, the nice thing about building a very energy-efficient building is a thicker wall assembly and better windows. So, um, those, those two components have built-in sound, uh, barriers and, you know, have their own, uh, SDC sound rating.
Thank you.
Uh, Council President? Council President?
Councilwoman Velez.
I, I just thought, you know, I mean, am I like a wall that, you know, my questions don't, someone don't get answered? I mean, I requested when we started, two hours ago, an email, uh, from the director about where the verbiage is about the, um, F H M A, F H M... Oh, God. F H... M F A. Now I got all confused. H M F A, H M F A, N J H M F A. Um, where, where is that information that he said that it should be part of there? I still haven't got the answer, I still, I, I...
Yeah, Councilwoman, I, I think what they, what they tried to say, and I'm not, I'm not speaking for them, is that in order for them to try to get this funded...
Yep.
...mortgage, they need to basically, uh, they, it's going to generate of revenue to take care of the mortgage expense. And if you go to the taxation, given only ask them to make a senior building, low income, um, they're going to be able to provide that for them. That's what they give you, that's what they told us. Mr. Portelli, Mr. Wilson?
It, it does come down to a basic question of feasibility, uh, like you just started to talk about. Uh, Mr. Powell did talk about the QAP, and, uh, there is, uh, another one of the, the subsidy sources is subject to a, um, uh, for a thirty-year affordability restriction. So, if it's more than one layer here that requires that term of the pilot.
Uh, Councilwoman Velez? Councilwoman Velez?
Yeah, the corporate council is in. Sorry, the corporate to council is in?
Yeah, she's answered.
Okay. Corporate council, um, and I, and please, uh, uh, Council President, understand where my question is coming. We approve a memorandum, uh, not a memorandum, a developer agreement on August twenty-nine, two thousand nineteen. If, it is almost a, a, almost a year, August twenty-nine, two thousand nineteen. Uh, let me, uh, get the exact date, okay? October first, two thousand nineteen, right? That was signed, passed. Can, can corporate coun- co- corporate council, can go for Article fourteen?
Um, okay, Councilman, I don't have that agreement in front of me.
Okay, so can I read, can I read, can I read the part I'm, I'm, I'm interested into know where we at? Because...
Sure.
Okay. Says pilot, it says, uh, fourteen dots one, pilot contingency and financial agreement. The developer intends to apply to the city of pa- of full approval of one of the more financial agreements. The financial agreement provided for among the other things came in view of taxes person named J S A forty-eight, column twenty-one, et cetera. And ca- and, and, and column says pilot. Attentively, the re- the, the redeveloper, redeevelper may also apply for a tax abatement person to the city of Patterson Cole, chapter four-four-five, and the New Jersey Academy of Opportunity Act of two thousand thirteen. N J S A, you know, fifty-two, twenty-seven, eighty-four, eighty-nine, through C, et cetera, et cetera. I, I want to go to this part. If and due to the ten available on the application by law and the requested by the, the redeevelper, the city agrees to consider the redeevelper pilot application or E O A abatement application in good faith, but the redeevelper acknowledged that the city retained both discretion whatever to grant the pilot or E O A abatement. In the event that the city and the developer failed to agree, failed to agree upon the essential terms of the financial agreement of the city, uh, the city fails to make a determination with respect of the pilot or the E O A abatement within a hundred eighty days following the effective date, then either party may elect to terminate the agreement by providing notice to that effect to the other party, the pilot contishes. So, if we went over, almost a year, almost October, October, uh, two thousand nineteen will be a year that we approved this, um, development agreement, okay? And we are now in July, two thousand twenty. How this could be interpreted if we move forward?
Well, just not withstanding the full agreement because obviously I don't have it in front of me and I have not reviewed that agreement in some time. However, all that says is you have the right to terminate with notice. No notice was given, given on either side, that either side wish to terminate the agreement. So the agreement isn't still, is still in full force and effect.
So that answers your question, uh, councilman.
So I mean, we still could go into an agreement or not with this pilot, in other words.
Absolutely, because all that says is you have the right to terminate with proper notice and no notice was given as we stand here today.
So, uh, when, and, and council president, you was, I believe you was here, uh, yes, you was elected.
Yes, I was here.
Correct. And, and, and you were sitting next to me, uh, when we was approving this, uh, um, um, this, uh, development agreement. And one of the question that I asked in that time is especially to you, the finest, highlight in all these pages, what was important and was not important? That's why right now we in the front of a, a pre, uh, unapproval for the pilot. If they will take time and not rush it to us and explain that we already approved way back in two thousand nineteen that they could come, that they, that, huh, that they could come to us with a proposal of a pilot.
And anyone could come with a proposal for a pilot?
It's already here.
Hey, hear me out. There, it says there that we could entertain, it doesn't say that we approved it, councilman. You read it, you read it, corporation counsel, are you there? Corporation counsel?
I am.
All he read was that we would entertain it, that's what we're doing it right now, councilman. He doesn't say that we have to approve it or not.
So what?
So we would entertain just like someone months ago or a year ago, bring another pilot, anyone could come in and propose a pilot. So I don't understand what the issue is.
Yeah, the issue is big. What will happen, what will happen? And, and I want you to, uh, uh, be plain black. What will happen, what will be the negative of any action if we decide not to approve a pilot? What will be the negative between the tax credit or we, or we move only, or we move forward only with the, uh, component of the stadium? Or what?
I'll tell you, I'll tell you, I'll tell you, and I'm gonna tell you briefly. The same way we had a situation to approve an agreement, we had a situation either we approve the lease or we lose the credits, right? That's what we had before. Uh, second, we had to approve the de- the developer's agreement. In that developer's agreement, we each spoke in finance and at the council meeting and request a certain language to be put in there. Now, the thing is, I understand why this meeting is being extended because it was, we using this as a workshop session almost. And at the same time, we're gonna take action on this item today. That's what we have in an extensive discussion. But councilman, you read it and it's in plain language, it's plain English. Anyone could come and entertain a, a presenter pilot here. If the administration presented to us, we gotta entertain it. That's, that's what it is, nothing to it. Uh, council members, I think we had a lengthy discussion, this is up for first reading. Um, we're gonna have more question, if he passes, you're gonna have more questions from now to the day of, you know, the second reading. The public are gonna have a shot also at, you know, going after this, when at this, I mean. If he doesn't pass, then they have to reconsider it.
Can, can I ask the last question?
No.
Hold on a minute, ca- councilwoman Cotton?
No, I just wanted him to clarify, I didn't hear what he said when councilwoman Minz asked him about the purpose of the fifteen two-bedrooms, what was the purpose of it? Uh, Mr. Wilson? Where is he? Uh, Mr. Potelli?
I can't hear him.
Councilwoman Minz, could you answer that question because he read-
Councilwoman Cotton, he said in case they had to have, um, a caregiver or caretaker with them, that was the purpose.
Thank you. Councilwoman Villas, uh?
Yes, uh, uh, to the two gentlemen that, uh, uh, that was here at the, uh, I don't know, they disappeared me now. Uh, the one with the blue, uh, like, okay, and the one with a nice suit, he disappeared with me, okay.
Mr. Potelli?
Yeah, Potelli, and, 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 and have you, have, have you attend any fundraisers in the past month of Patani Patterson?
That, councilman?
That's, I'm asking, have you have attended any fundraiser in Patani Patterson?
No.
No.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I'm clerk.
Councilwoman Minz, wait one second.
Councilwoman Villas?
Um, you said that it was full taxation would be two hundred thousand? Because it seems as though I'm looking at some numbers here, I think they're incorrect.
Yeah, councilwoman, I didn't say that, they said that, but let me explain to you. At the actual value of the building, that's why, and again, I'm going by what they said. At the actual value of the building, if they assess it at four million something, which I don't see how, then it would be like, if you apply the rate, it would probably be less than two hundred thousand. But if they assess the building at twelve million, then we're talking about almost tripling that amount, right? So it all depends of, if you have a question like that, let's ask our assessor to see how much a building of that magnitude would be assessed at. That's, that's what we can ask, to be honest.
Thank you.
Uh, could we entertain a, a, a motion for, for a vote on this item, please?
No, you already have a stop.
Could we do roll call, it's been so long that I forgot it. We already have first and second on this. Could we do roll call, my clerk?
Yes, Mr. President, um, can you hear me, sir?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Roll call in item number one for first reading, councilman Abdalik.
Yes.
Councilman Chaharney? Councilman, I think your mic is muted, councilman. Okay, he's good. Councilman?
Where is he?
Gilman?
Mr. Chaharney, can you hear me?
Looks like he's having some connectivity, that little yellow triangle.
Yeah, I see, I see the triangle.
Yeah.
Mr. Gilman, you up?
I'm gonna come back to him if he don't mind, Mr. President. And I get Ryan to come on, man, sir. Get Ryan. Mr. President, I'm gonna just move on to councilwoman Cotton, in the meantime, councilwoman Cotton?
Look, I, you know, I had been sitting here, um, listening to this project. You know, this project started back in October twenty nineteen, they voted on it. I wasn't part of the economic, um, development, um, committee. But, you know, people are saying what I'm getting out of it. You know what we're getting out of a stadium that has been empty for twenty-one years? You know what we're getting out of this? And I can imagine just seeing our children back in there again. No one's gonna come in here and say, I built this stadium. Because the stadium belongs to the, to the high schools and I'd just like to see that stadium being used.
Yeah.
Can you hear me? I'm sorry, but, I mean, even the-
I hear you.
Thank you. Even the housing component, and I spoke already about that, that because of the situation that we're in with the COVID-nineteen, there's some things that's devastating to our community. For the senior housing piece, affordable housing, there's, and I know with the housing mortgage financial agencies that they do require, uh, a city to do a, a pilot in order to get this. And I can tell you, we're gonna see some things happening in our city that we may not want to see, but it's happening, I'm getting the phone calls, but affordable housing is a main key, even senior housing. And you know, I gotta say that I remember back in the day playing in the stadium, I mean, just to be able to get the, the, the Negro beat of part of that in there for, 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 so I may not be here to see this project get finished, but it's gonna get done some kind of way because nobody's knocking at the door. Council people out there know someone that wants to come in here and fix that stadium, then please bring them into us. Bring them into, so we can see. But, but I can say now, with the daycare coming, with the senior housing affordable, you know, I talked to my friend who live in Jersey City, a lot of that stuff that went on over there, there's no affordable housing over there. So I can say that we definitely, definitely need affordable housing. If the requirement for housing mortgage financial agency is requiring a piece of this, we, you know, seniors cannot go past nine hundred, a thousand dollars a month, they really cannot. So, you know, with that being said, I don't have, I want to see this stadium over. I'm not getting nothing out of it, it's for our city. Like I said, I wasn't even reporting the talk in October.
Councilwoman?
Uh, I hear you, councilman, just wait a second.
Take it right.
It's, it, everybody, so, I mean, but it's, it's about a project, it's about seeing, um, you know, back the stadium open again. It's about seeing, um, the track meets, about seeing the football games, it's about seeing the baseball game. It's about our kids, I mean, from now will be able to, and you know what?
Councilwoman?
I can see it moving up, wait, council president, I can see it.
Right, I, I'm trying to take you, I didn't say, councilwoman, I'm almost there.
I'm fine, but with that being said, you know, since this is first reading, you know, maybe go with me sometimes, some of you council members to some of my seniors that, that cries on my shoulder who looking for affordable housing. With that being said, council president, my vote is yes.
Thank you, councilwoman. Um, I move on to councilwoman, um, Davila?
Sure.
Madam clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
As soon as Chadry spoke.
I think he's having, I see the little triangle on the top. Mr. Gilman, he went away, I think he's there, Mr. Gilman, are you, uh, can you hear me?
Ryan is working with him, so let me see if he can hear us.
I'm over there.
Uh, it came back. Ryan is working with him, can I take councilwoman Davila in the meantime?
No.
Councilwoman Davila?
Pass.
Okay. Councilman Jackson?
Madam clerk, you're gonna pass right now?
Okay, you pass, okay. Councilman Minz?
Pass, madam clerk.
Councilman Grass?
We playing football before the stadium is built, I'm passing.
Okay, so I have to go back to Mr. Chaharney, Mr. Chaharney, are you there?
Madam clerk, oh, he called in, oh, he called in instead of trying to fix this issue because-
Hey, me, I have a number for him, let me give the number to Ryan, because I think Ryan is texting him. Can you give me a second and I get the number to give it to Ryan, sir?
Council president?
Yes, councilman.
I think that little spark what it's saying is that the camera, the camera, they can't see, you can't see the camera.
Uh, it says it's due to low bandwidth, a local computer condition, so he, he's having some issues.
Okay, so, so-
So, councilman, definitely even if-
Okay, so the reason why I want it to pass, I know where I'm going with this, okay? But it's obvious to me, you know, and, you know, sometimes when I hear some of my, my colleagues speak, you know, it, it almost sounds like, you know, we're against, you know, when you make this thing-
Oh, yes, I can hear you.
Come and see our, our, you know, our seniors.
Council president, uh, council, sorry, councilwoman Davila, he's back.
Yeah, councilwoman, gi- given that he have technical difficulties, madam clerk? To, uh, Gilman, for a vote?
Yes. Councilman, Mr. Chaharney, uh, can you hear me now? I heard him earlier. Give one, a second, a second.
Council president, can you continue with the roll call? And people can vote and then go to councilman Chadry before the council president vote? Yeah, that's what we're doing, councilman, but, oh.
He's on, he's on, he's on, Mr. Chadry, can you hear me now?
Nah, he went away again, um, but let's just continue the roll call, he should call in, he should call in.
Yeah, guys, come here, here, can everyone hear me?
I can hear you, go ahead, sir, for your vote, please. Go ahead, I can hear you.
I'm here, everybody.
You, you're voting, sir?
We can't hear him.
Is he calling him?
Madam clerk, can you just have him call in, please?
He's, he's dialing in, um, he pretty much like that, Mr. President, he's dialing in.
Yeah, let's wait for him.
Just, just continue the roll call, madam clerk, please.
Okay, so, uh, councilman Davila, if for some reason while you're speaking and we hear him, can you give him a chance so we can get a hold of him? Councilman Davila, can you, uh, continue, please? Thank you.
Okay, so as I started saying, it almost sounds like when I hear some of my colleagues, you know, say, maybe you should come and speak to some of our seniors, you know? As a councilwoman at large, I've been everywhere in our city and we absolutely want more housing for our seniors. So this is not about voting against our seniors. Why hear him speaking?
I'm near his mic, just continue, councilwoman.
Uh, I can hear you, can you hear, hear me?
Go.
Yes, sir?
Yeah, yeah, go, I can, you can hear me?
Yes. Give us your vote, please.
Well, I, I can hear everyone, yeah.
All right, so say go vote.
Mr. Gilman, we just need you to vote, voting on this pilot for this reading?
All right, can you just up here?
Yes, we can hear you, Gilman.
The situation in hand is, I completely understand that the complexities of our project is never gonna be able to be disseminated to the public as easy as, as you want to. But from my perspective, from where-
I wish the director could listen to all the banging of that car, trust me.
Madam clerk, we, we have to do something about this?
He's calling in now, he's calling in now, I see him on the phone.
Yes, yes.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, so before I make my, uh, my vote to the madam clerk, what I want to say this first is that I understand that the complexities of a particular project are gonna be always difficult to try to understand. But we have a, a moral responsibility to try to strive for the right answer. Never in my life will I can, uh, will I ever question anyone's integrity, their compassion for the community or any of the decisions they've made. There are council members here that I've learned from a great deal in many different variety of areas. And I know that some individuals might be upset, but this is, in my belief, the right path forward for the city. There is no inferior motive on my end, nor is there any, um-
Can you hear me?
Nor is there any-
Ryan, can you-
Nor is there any- Yes, are you able to hear me now? I just want to make a quick, quick, quick- Oh, I can hear you, yes. But at the end of the day, we have to do what's right for the people.
Yes.
And there may not be a perfect plan that's gonna help us, but we have to get through at least some initial steps to get there. So my vote is yes.
Okay, thank you so much, I hear you loud and clear. Councilwoman Davila?
I cannot support-
Yes, I'm done.
So, woman, just continue, please.
Okay, okay. All right, councilwoman, go ahead.
To the viewers, you all that are watching and hearing, um, you already know where this is going. Out of, I can't- Out of, I can't consciously go to sleep at night and vote on something on this measure, okay? And it'd be, um, the burden, put the burden on the taxpayers of the city of Patterson. I, I, I can't support this. This is, this is very sad. My vote is no, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jackson? Councilwoman Jackson, can you hear me? Uh, Mr. President, can I move on and come back to try to get Councilwoman Jackson?
Sure, Madam Clerk.
Okay, Councilwoman Mims?
Pass.
Councilwoman Grant? Councilwoman Grant?
Uh, I'm sorry, I passed.
Councilwoman Jackson? I can't even hear Councilwoman Grant. I'm gonna move on again to Councilwoman Mims?
Pass, Madam Clerk.
Council President, point of order?
Point of order, Council President, yes.
Council President?
Councilwoman Davila?
We're in the middle of roll call, the game's gotta stop. I think there should, the passing, back and forth passing. I mean, come on, everybody knows where, where certain individuals are going. Everyone heard the same information that we all heard, come on, we all heard.
Councilwoman, with all due respect, you passed also several times. Uh, let's just continue the meeting, hold on a minute.
Okay, I did once, I did once.
Okay, you did once, but you passed, Councilwoman. Uh, other councilmembers have also passed. I understand it's frustrating, but councilmembers, please vote. I think we had a lengthy discussion. This is more than a workshop, we wouldn't have never spent this much time on the workshop, because we had, we had a lot of items, so we hear again that this shouldn't go to the workshop, because we had a lengthy, lengthy discussion in this meeting that we would have had in the workshop. So, could we vote at this time, please?
Yeah, let me see if I can get back to Councilman Jackson, Councilman Jackson? I... Can you see Councilman Jackson, Mr. President? I can't find him.
Uh...
I don't see where he's connected.
He's, he's here, let me unmute him real quick.
Okay.
Councilman Jackson? Madam Clerk, if he doesn't answer, just continue the roll call, we'll just vote.
I have my seat, Councilman.
After, after our vote, Councilwoman, I mean, uh, Madam Clerk, then you close, uh, you close the roll call.
Yes, sir. Okay, Councilwoman Mims?
Yes, and so, I think Councilwoman Ka, and she alluded to some great points, but I wanna bring some clarity. Uh, there was a miscommunication, um, as you know, this council has embarked upon something historic, we've never had a legal committee. On July the thirteenth, we had a legal committee meeting, um, and there are some items that will come before this council for executive session. So, I sent, um, a request out to copy to our Council President on July seventeen, for the request for those items to be for a special, for an executive session, which is what we normally do. It wasn't to set up a meeting for today, I am not the Council President, and so I just wanted to put that on record. We have a Council President who speaks to the clerk, and that is how this meeting came on today. This project, I have been talking to our administration, is not anything new. This project has been, um, in communication for two years. We voted on the redevelopment agreement on October the first, um, and it was approved seven to two. In that agreement, this, this item that we're voting on tonight is a part of that redevelopment agreement, with the childcare facility and the senior housing, um, and the parking, it's a part of that. When I did my calculations, right, if we do an assumption, um, this had a guessment, right? If we did it and say this project would be about five hundred thousand dollars in taxes that we receive, based on what we will get from this pilot over the thirty year period, um, and you do the calculations and the math, right? So, you do the five hundred thousand times the thirty years, it's about fifteen million dollars, right? Which, um, will get about three point eight seven four five nine nine, that's about a twenty-five point eighty-three percent return. If that is the number, based on our tax assessment, nothing is currently there, it's been in a place of deprivation for over twenty years. We're at a place where we can make history, um, it's just a sad situation where my kids have not had the opportunity to experience what I've experienced, um, and I want us to be, this project move forward. Um, in closing, Council President, I wanna, um, thank Governor Murphy for working with our Senator Nellie Poe, our Assemblyman Wimberly, and our Assemblywoman Travanda Sumter as it relates to the a hundred and thirty million dollars in tax credits, which Patterson has never applied for, and the lengthy time that they've been providing this to municipalities, so I wanna thank them for being able to, to provide that, and with this project, fifty-one million dollars of the tax credit is going to this project. And with that being said, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Grant? Councilwoman Grant?
Give it a few seconds, Councilwoman, if, if either Councilman Jackson or the rest don't respond, uh, I'll go and, and, and we'll close the roll call at that time. He's back.
Councilwoman Grant, can you hear me?
Yeah, can, can I have the council vote?
Four in favor, one against, one actually, if I, uh, that's Councilman Jackson, because I'm able to hear from him right here.
Okay, so, so... So, I've been going over the development agreement, the, and I noticed that, um, in August twenty, uh, twenty-nine, two thousand nineteen, uh, this passed in October first, two thousand nineteen, one, two, three, with seven, eight, four, five, six, seven, eight, um, it passed with, um, seven in favor, two, no. Um, I've been noticing here that this is a document that given the opportunity to the administration to go back and forward with the developer, and trying to secure funding and grants and everything out there, to make this project a successful one. But one thing I have to understand, reading all this, uh, all these papers that I have in my right ear, that if this, if this goes the way that I'm thinking it's gonna go, it's gonna be worse for us. It's gonna be worse for us. So, if we don't move forward, it's gonna be worse for us. So, saying that, this is the first reading, um, you know, the developer have not... ...allowed something clear, I believe this is a real project that we are moving forward. But you know what? I, I, I have to, I have to give credit where credit is, I have a few pieces of documents that are heavy, paper, and this has a lot of gold in it, so, given the benefit of the doubt, uh, somebody said that there will be a lot of fireworks in the city of Patterson, I hope it's not the one that they confiscated in the fourth of July, uh, so my vote at this time will be yes.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. President?
Yes, Madam Clerk, so, we all agree, you know, and one of the ones that didn't agree with the way the tax credits were used. You know what? The decisions were already made, administration, and we need to make the best out of what we have.
Mr. President, no.
Now, Councilman Jackson, we called for you many times, I'm in the middle of making my statement before a vote, um... Given that I just started, Madam Clerk, can you call, uh, Mr. Jackson for a vote?
Sure, 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 Mr. President. Councilman Jackson, your vote is item number one for first reading, sir?
Um, thank you, uh, Madam Clerk. It's rather, it's, it's rather entertaining and disappointing, but it's entertaining, I had to make sure I had a popcorn for this, for tonight's meeting, and it's extremely disappointing, it's, uh, when we talk about the lengthy periods of time of Patterson, and I have, maybe it's because of habitual, uh, mismanagement, habitual corruption, you know, Patterson has been on the forefront of corruption, on the head, at the headlines of corruption all the time, and this deal right here is an example of that. You know, when people don't even understand, to the community, because I'm not talking to anyone else, to the community, do me a favor, pick up your smartphones, or go on your tablet, and Google the average, the national average for construction costs throughout the entire country. You'll see that it's under one hundred dollars per square foot, in this, in this, in the city of New York, it's relative to one fifty to two hundred dollars square foot. This, this, the seniors element of this project is costing us almost three hundred dollars a square foot. If you do the math, on the eighty-four thousand square feet, on just, on above average, one fifty, a hundred and fifty dollars per square foot, the project should cost twelve million dollars, but we're being built for twenty-eight million dollars, while people are walking away with eight point four million dollars in developers. This right here is a travesty, and it's a joke on how the public is being treated. We told we need housing, at what cost? Well, you know, it's gonna be so nostalgic, at what cost? So, we swearing at a councilman who has not one question, only spoken the affirmative. That right there needs to be investigated, because I believe there's a direct conflict in which...
Councilman, Councilman, I, I think, thanks for your support, other people votes. Come on, that makes sense, I'll give you fifteen more minutes.
It's my time to talk, I didn't hear the clock go off.
Continue, please.
You're interrupting me. I have to say whatever I wanna say under the sun, it's my prerogative, you cannot waffle that. You cannot waffle that. If anyone wants to, wants to see me personally, you know where to find me.
You have ten seconds, Councilman.
Very good, I mean, it makes no sense to even vote on it, we already know, we know all the votes at the point. Why is there such an act going on? My vote is no, what's wrong with you?
Thank you, Doc.
Go ahead, put on your hat now.
Councilman, Mr. President, do your vote, Mr. President?
Sure.
Thank you.
Councilmembers residents of the city, we all could agree that, we already put on the show for many months, we don't agree with the way the tax credits were used, and that's not what discussing right now. We're discussing a pilot, just like we previously discussed some other projects, and an initiative that we have to contemplate as councilmen, as, as councilmembers, to try to help come, uh, you know, bring all these projects into fruition. Then we have a building that we requested a council to be made into a senior building in order to contemplate the developers agreement. That discussion took place here in finance. In finance, it took place. What we asked them, look, the, the, the school district already has a big burden in that area, the schools are filled up to capacity, we cannot afford to build housing in that area. So, we asked that we put senior, you know, the senior building. On top of that, we also asked, because there's a, a high demand for early childhood in the area, we asked them to build a component also on that building. What, what we doing here is entertaining, just like the developers agreement said, entertaining a pilot. We already gonna have more time to discuss this from now till second reading. Now till second reading. The purpose of a pilot is to incentivize developers to come build, which doesn't fit, which doesn't fit the need for this project, because they're already, they're already here, right? But, I understand, given that we put this burden, I, I gotta say a burden, on the potential revenues that this rental revenue that this building is generating by creating, making it affordable housing. At this time, I'm gonna vote yes on the pilot, um, and then we're gonna discuss the further for second reading. Any other questions we have, we have time to, uh, to ask. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is six in favor, two against, and the record reflect that it turned wide and vacant, therefore, item number one hereby adopted on first reading. It held at the next regular meeting of August eleventh, twenty twenty, at seven P M.
Move to close.
Move to close, Madam Clerk. Second. Third.
Mr. President, you have a motion by...
Yeah, I didn't get who's stuff.
What they call them, they need?
Yes, Councilwoman Delise, and then he was second by Councilmember S and Councilwoman Mims.
And Jackson.
I think I heard Councilman Jackson, sure. Okay, roll. Okay.
Hey, Madam Clerk.
To the close, the special meeting of, um, July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, Councilman Abner Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Chaharney?
You can't hear the Gilman.
I can't hear you.
He said yes, he gave a thumbs up.
Okay, alright, Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you, I just wanna say to everyone, have a safe, um, night and be safe out there, and God bless you. My vote is yes.
Councilwoman Davila?
So, just to add something, um, the redevelopment agreement, um, if I'm not mistaken, was not a second reading. So, I just want the viewers to know out there, that, um, I did not support the redevelopment agreement in second reading, so I just want everyone to... Who's speaking? I'm speaking. Who's speaking?
Continue, continue, uh, Councilwoman.
Patterson, you see the disrespect here on the council. I just wanted to make that correction, okay, because I did not support it, this is, and I said it before, this is not about me not supporting the administration. You all saw the questions that were being answered by the developers, you saw they have no skin in the game, they wanna make it seem as they do, but when you're talking about a seventy-plus million dollar project, okay, they're making eight point four million, okay, in the developer's fee, and they have what maybe real money, maybe a little over a million dollars, you all see the numbers. No one is saying that I don't wanna see Henshaw, Henshaw develop, no one's saying that I don't want, um, uh, supportive, uh, housing for our, our seniors, I said, but the reality is that we cannot, and I will not, I cannot go to sleep at night knowing that we are putting this burden on our taxpayers. So, in closing, Madam Clerk, all my councilmembers, yes, true.
Thank you, close, thank you. Councilman Jackson?
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, your vote to close their special meeting?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I enjoyed my time tonight, it was rather entertaining. My message to the public is very consistent, I'm always consistent. People talk about them, no, why? Because we do stupid things in this city. We buy trailers for one point four million dollars. We pay five million dollars for properties that's worth less than a million dollars. We pay, we allow entities in this community to spend twelve million dollars without anything to show for. We do so many foolish things around here that I consistently point out. We have people who have degrees in nursing degrees in all, uh, areas, and yet we still see these things continue to happen. You see favors being given out. Patterson, it's only you going to be able to correct this. Please remember this, as it's time to vote, remember who was consistent, and who's standing in favor for you, or who's running smoke up your tailpipe. This is absolutely ridiculous, this is an embarrassment. This right here is why Patterson is the laughing stock. When we spend three hundred dollars per square foot, we get no residual return, no, no return to the community. No, no ratables, nothing, no job creation, nothing, you get nothing, Patterson. You get a slap in the face, thank you, boy, have a good night. I know, Madam Clerk, listen, I respect and appreciate the job you do, it's always professional, and Patterson, we must do better. If these people can't understand what's best for you, then please, elect somebody who can. My vote is no, Madam Clerk, my vote is no.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Um, Councilwoman Mims?
And so, Patterson, one thing I think that you know about me, I'm very transparent and very clear. Anything that we does in our council meetings, you can open it, it's called an open public records app. And I'm, I'm, I'm asking, and even almost demanding, that you as the public, go to the clerk's office and request documents, and see... go to the clerk's office and request documents and see what's written for yourself. One, the redevelopment agreement that was approved by this council, I'm gonna give you the resolution number, I want you to go to the clerk's office and write this number down. Resolution nineteen, semicolon, five, five, four. Then you will see the seven to two vote, I want you to request it. You don't have to believe nothing I say, get the information for yourself. All the numbers, all the documents that are being presented before us tonight, anything that they said they're gonna give, at this point, which is open and they've said it, is openable. Get the information for yourself, take the time for yourself. If I can turn my camera, my kitchen table is like a desk. It is filled with papers, I make phone calls, I call even up until fifteen minutes before the meeting, asking questions, getting different, um, answers to make sure that when our vote is in the best interest of our community and, and for our residents. But that's my, my homework assignment, as a teacher, my, uh, teacher, um, thinking of one of my teachers, I keep seeing her every day now, but I'm saying that to you, do, do that. Check the input that's predicted for the meeting, you don't have to believe nothing we say. Go to the city clerk's office and request it. The redevelopment agreement that was approved on second reading on October first, the resolution number is nineteen, semicolon, five, five, four. Read it for yourself, we're now at the place where tonight we voted for the pilot that is included in that resolution. Patterson, check it out, you'll see for yourself, some of you probably will come back and we'll have a sidebar meeting and you'll see that I was given a right staff. Madam Clerk, thank you so much, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Lance?
Should I pray before saying my vote, uh, you know, I just wanna, I just wanna say something, uh, it's simple. You know, I feel offended when, uh, uh, my colleagues, uh, use the word stupid, and we make stupid decision in the city council, you know, let me, let me, let me say this. When we approved one point two million dollars for a trailer, okay? Let me tell you who's utilizing that trailer, John Star is utilizing that trailer. P A L is using the site. And, uh, and not only that, our juveniles are using the, the football field, the field for baseball, and et cetera, and that's where our decision one point two million dollars goes to, you know? And if you look at the site, it looks better, you know, and, uh, other grant funding have been going to that area that, uh, the community take advantage, so that's not a stupid decision where we need to vote for a trailer or et cetera, et cetera. Now, I have read all the statement around in, in YouTube, uh, they call me, uh, the flip-flopper. Let me tell you why I, 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 I like that title, you know, you know why I like that title? Because, because, and, and with all respect, uh, Council President, you had to see my phone, who calls me and how do I answer the calls? Because I don't like to get this, uh, I don't like to get facts from people, I like to investigate my own facts and make my own decisions, okay? And even, even, even a police called me today, I ignored him the call, thinking that he was gonna talk about the pilot. So now I have to say, can you call me back or you could pray for me, because they be attacking me without no reason. So now, um, we, we all know that the development agreement and Councilwoman Minz, you don't need to tell people to waste their time to come to City Hall and say who voted in favor. Now we only know, we know that Chahin Kalid voted no, and Michael Jackson voted no, everybody knows that.
I voted no, Councilman. I voted no on second reading, and we will look to the tape, and we, we will look for the tape, we will look for the tape. I voted no on second reading.
Okay, so all right, so the document, that, see, this is the thing, and, and, and...
We will look for the tape, we will look for the tape, because that is incorrect. I voted yes for the first reading, no for the second.
Do we know the Councilwoman, uh, do we know it?
All right. All right, so...
Our bodies know it.
So, so, okay, Councilwoman, uh, I, I just reading the document that I have on, and now he knew that she was gonna mention that.
That's okay, Councilman, my apologies to you, but we will go to the tape.
Thank you. Council President, before I, I vote, and I wanna make this request to you. With all the respect of this council, and I already spoke to you, if everybody is not afraid to go out of the, go to barbecue and make a soju gathering and else than that, we should go back to the council, we spend a lot of money in those divider in the council. I think if you know how to run the, the area, it, it will be safe for us to come back. If everybody could walk around and, and gather...
Do we know the council?
Yeah, and, 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 and I just wanna say that, you know... I know if we will vote this down, it will be worse.
Councilman, you...
So...
I see, uh, by, uh, one.
Oh, I did, oh, I thought we was part of the meeting again, all right. My vote is, uh, yes to close this meeting.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman Lance. Mr. President, your vote, sir?
So... State of grievances. The, the agreements are states that we're gonna entertain this pilot, it doesn't say that it's already approved. I don't know why we keep referencing the agreement, is it relevant at this point? We had other people, you know, I'm gonna put a request, uh, Madam B A, who, uh, uh, could you ask, uh, also Madam Clerk, actually? I wanna know how many pilots have been approved in the last ten years?
Okay, sir.
I wanna know. What we have before us here is, we, the administration made decisions that were not approved, that did not have to be approved by the council. If each of us get a hundred and thirty-three million dollars, each of us, each of us will have different ideas of what we could do with the one hundred and thirty-three million dollars. Now, previous council, previous council approved to make the parking authority, the redevelopment agency. At that point, it took away our power to make decisions on how the tax credits would be used, right? The administration already made that decision in the past. We, we could kick the dead horse all day regarding how bad this deal is, we already have. We already have done that for a long time. Probably for the last year, we've been, you know, bidding at that, at that subject. But we have to analyze, our responsibility is to analyze what's before us. That's our responsibility. I voted no on the lease because, for the stadium, because we did not have a developers' agreement. I said to myself, how can I vote on a lease that doesn't have a developers' agreement? Now, did I vote yes on the developers' agreement, sure, but I made sure that there was language there that protect us from them coming back to us for a loan, which, that was their intent. In finance, we spoke to them, and they said that they will leave that option open, that they might come to us for us to maybe back, you know, a loan on their behalf. And I said, no, let's put it in developers' agreement, you need my support, let's remove that from there. Chahin Kalid requested that he cannot put a burden on that area, so guess what he did? He requested to have housing, uh, that building to be, uh, housing, um, units, building that building. And to also understand the need of the second ward, which I get calls all the time, people still think, uh, I'm a commissioner, asking me to try to help them get their kids into those, uh, early childhood, uh, centers. We requested them to put a, a, a early childhood center there. So that's why some of us voted on the agreement, because we had, we had nothing to do with the allocation of the credits. So I just wanna let the residents know is that I'm gonna, I'm requesting to see how many pilots have been approved in the past ten years. And this one right now, all we trying to do is try to make this work. We have a lot of other questions to ask from now till second reading, and, uh, we just trying to make things work. Let's make the best out of what we have, and that's why I voted yes. My vote is yes, uh, Madam Clerk, we're gonna close this meeting, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Council President, just quickly, um, if I, I, I know before the meeting, this is for Madam Clerk. Um, I'd like, I'd like a copy of the meeting of that date and the vote, because I don't know why that appears that way when I know, and there's people tend to me that they have, they saw the meeting, and that second reading, I voted no. So to have a document that says that I voted yes, I'd like to be, to be put in writing and a transcript. So, so President, I'm putting in that request to Madam Clerk.
Okay, Councilman. Councilman Davila, I, I look into it and I double-check my records as well.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
I, you know, tomorrow, if there's an error, it's from our end.
Yes, there, there is an error.
I will, I will.
Thank you so much, good night, everyone.
Oh, may, let me, okay, let me, um, I know.
Sorry.
Okay, main favor, one against, as the record reflects that the Tarry White is vacant, therefore the special meeting of July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, here about adjourned. Good night, everyone, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Have a good night all, have a good week.